And it is now on the wall as a to be read.
To be read, I understand. Today, my featured book.
Some of the books that are on there.
Oh, isn't that crazy? Today, um, the featured book in my class was I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings.
That is on the list.
Which is the most banned book.
I know why what?
The Caged Bird Sings, Maya Angelou's memoir.
Oh, okay.
Published in nineteen sixty-nine, and it apparently makes some white people uncomfortable.
I'll not read it.
You know, some things are just as easy as that.
Well, but then they don't want anybody else to. You know, what do you do with that?
They're right to say Barry's not coming.
Don't read it.
Well, but they tried to. I mean, that's the deal, right?
Okay.
The guy in Tennessee.
Guess and we'll go through that probably.
All right. And Mr. Gross is got a family emergency tonight, so we will need to be excusing him. Think we have everyone else. And with that, we will call the meeting to order at seven oh one. Regular meeting at the Cedar Springs City Council for Thursday, February tenth, twenty twenty-two. If you would all rise and say the pledge with me, I think that would be fabulous. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I am going to make my screen a little bit. My screen bigger. Uh, Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Gross. Is not here, Ms. Hamel.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Powell.
Here.
Oh, I skipped over Ms. Nixon.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
Here.
And Mayor Conley is here. At this time, I would accept a motion to excuse Counselor Gross.
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Gross, we hope that your family emergency ends well and that you are well. And people that you care about are well. Uh, at this time, we have a public comment section. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Is there anyone who would like to come? Hello, wonderful new library director?
So my name is Kami, K-A-M-E-Y-H-O-W-E. My address is one oh seven North Main Street. That is the actual library address. For those of you who do not know me, or I have not had the chance to meet, I am the new director of the library. So I just wanted to give you some stats of some things that happened at the library in January, okay? For storytime, it was pet's month. So we had eighty-nine kids throughout the month come to storytime. We had puppies, live puppies, we had fish, and we had kitties. We are conducting a winter reading program, winter reading bingo. There are a hundred and eight participants from zero to a hundred in age. For six to eleven-year-olds, there was mini golf inside the library, and there were eleven golfers. There was a kitten adoption event that correlated with the storytime on kitties. Uh, there were five kitties, and there were twenty-one kids, twenty-three adults, and two kitties were adopted. There is a Biggest Loser weight competition happening. There are twenty-four participants in that, and that's about halfway through. There were sixteen participants at the two meetings of the writers' group, six attendees at the book club. The library is now a blood donation site, so once a month, we'll be hosting a blood donation drive. That next one is coming up on the fifteenth of February.
Thank you.
There were thirty-eight donors, so we'd love to have that plus more. The Stitch and Chat ladies, uh, there were sixteen throughout the month of January. There were one hundred and forty-four new materials purchased for the library collection. Eight hundred and ninety-two ebooks. That sounds like a lot, but we are in a cooperative, so that was cooperative-wide. And a hundred and eighty-seven audiobooks were added to the collection. This next month, we are having a birdhouse auction. I do know that the council has a birdhouse coming. Those birdhouses are due by tomorrow. The auction will start on the fourteenth. Oh, yes, and we're going to be, um, working on our budget in the next month. So that is what's happening at the library. We look forward to seeing you there.
Yeah. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. I just looked out there and I realized all ladies. Wow.
We are a little unusual that way.
Oh, it's a wonderful unusual. Um, dear, oh, Sue Wolf, one five two nine oh two Still Avenue. Um, dear city council members, I'm asking for your assistance regarding the recent enforcement of shutting down multifamily units that may have originally been built as a single-family unit in the R-one district. I know several letters were recently sent to rental property owners saying, when a name change occurs on the property, it will no longer be allowed to function as it is currently functioning. May I ask you to please address the following questions, and I know you can't do that tonight, but with a follow-up letter. Number one, and I got it all written down, so I'll give you a copy of my everything. You guys were, you were on it. Um, uh, number one, why did the city adopt and then strictly enforce regular inspections to include the collection of funds for the past fifteen-plus years on these, quote, "non-conforming" properties, unquote, with no mention of it being non-conforming? Was it perhaps because the city itself was not aware of the non-conformity? Number two, has the city always maintained proper records of all permits, special uses, and any other necessary information on properties? If not, is it really fair to lay the burden of proof on the homeowner after it has been used as a multifamily unit for perhaps twenty, thirty, forty-plus years? When the title insurance companies and mortgages issued loans on these properties, why hasn't it been recorded as a "non-conforming" use? Why not grandfather in these existing properties and then move forward on regulating future conversions of a single-family home into a multifamily home in the R-one? Number three, why do I sense, and maybe it's me, a negative stereotype of rental residents and rental property owners? I have been asked, how would you like to live next door to a rental? I am hoping the only answer to that question would be, I would extend a warm welcome and a helping hand to all my neighbors without asking them if they pay rent or they pay on a mortgage. Rental properties are under a much stricter standard of maintenance than owner-occupied by the mandated inspections requiring immediate compliance of any noted issues. These regulations may make them safer and more attractive than some owner-occupied properties. People choose to rent, as I'm sure you know, for a variety of reasons, such as physical abilities, economic situation, professional changes, personal reasons. Have you ever rented? My husband and I sure did when we first got married. Do people, do people who rent deserve the same respect and opportunity as others? They are choosing to live in Cedar Springs. Isn't that a good thing? Many of our rental residents often purchase a home in the Cedar Springs community to become, to become permanent Cedar Springs community residents. And as I'm sure you also know, there is a national housing shortage right now. Will you please help to improve this need in our community rather than reduce the rental opportunities? And while I myself have not been notified of any non-conforming properties that we own, I still strongly believe those rental property owners who have received notice are being subjected to an unfair and unjustified situation. Numerous rental owner properties and rental residents are willing to work toward a fair resolution rather than take this to court. And please know, I don't say that as a threat, but rather for me to be transparent and to offer my help, if at all possible, in reaching a mutually agreeable solution. I don't think anybody ever wins in court. I look forward to hearing from you, and again, thank you for your service. And then one other quick, one quick thing, and I'll just give this to you. I just sent this to your appointed representative, who is Darla, or who is Mrs. Falcon, regarding her appointment on the North Kent Community Enrichment Board. And I'm sure she's going to forward that to you, but maybe this will save her a step, so I'll send, I'll give you a copy of the email and some other communications so that you have it now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sue.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Sally Ranky, and I don't live in downtown Cedar Springs, but my address is forty-nine twenty-nine Shiloh Drive. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I sent you guys a copy of some of my concerns regarding sixty-four East Maple Street. My buyers are here, and we're just here to, um, discuss the situation, how it happened. So imagine buying an investment property that is a multifamily home with great intentions of making improvements to make a safer environment for four families, only to find out two weeks after closing that you had to revert the property back to a single-family home or provide proof that the owner back in the fifties had approval for the city to do so. Us as realtors, I'm a Realtor, we go through an extensive process to purchase a home. First, there's a lending process that takes about thirty days. There's underwriters, appraisers, all involved to determine the value, because they have great invested interest in making sure the property is of, um, good purchase. Then there's the title search. The seller has to provide clear title for the buyer. That search was done, and nothing was shown up on sixty-four East Maple. Um, then, two weeks before closing, I called the city to check to see if there are any unknown special assessments, like sewer assessments or any special assessments that were attached to the property that maybe didn't show up on title. And the gal at the city said, looked it up, she said, nope, sixty-four East Maple is good. Um, so we all did our due diligence to ensure the property was of sound investment. There was a change of use. There was not a change of use. There was just a change in ownership. Um, I do believe the city, city of Cedar Springs records go back to nineteen eighty-two. I'm not sure what the zoning ordinance was back in nineteen fifty, when this house was converted into six units. The city is asking for proof that someone had approval from the city when it was changed from a single-family to a multi. There was no documentation, um, back then, like we have now. Deals were done on a handshake, and I don't believe the city has documentations on what the zoning ordinance was prior to nineteen eighty-two. So it's almost impossible for us to find documentation that they're requesting. Larry Young, I don't know if you know him, um, he purchased the home back in nineteen ninety-one um, when he was on the zoning board, and he converted the home from a six-unit to a four-unit. Permits were pulled to have four separate electrical units installed, and it was approved by the city. And I think, do you guys remember, I sent you some more, it was like history of the house. It was originally a double lot. It was originally two homes. They picked in the turn of the century in eighteen hundred, they picked up and they made it into one big house. So in the basement, it's, there's two houses there. There's two separate basements. So I'm just here, um, just so you can hear us, two recommendations I have to prevent maybe another buyer in a Realtor from ending up in this situation. The city manager did say that they sent out a letter to the owners. My, one of my recommendations is a certified letter should have been sent out to the owners, providing proof that they received the letter, instead of just sending one out, provide proof that the owners actually received it. And then the buyers have to be informed before closing. A red flag needs to show up on title, showing that there is a lien against the property, even if it's a dollar from the city of Cedar Springs. Just to show some indication that there is, uh, something wrong, the city sees or views something wrong with a particular property, instead of us two weeks later finding out, which is very unfortunate, especially for my buyers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Or anyone else?
I'm Catherine Ladishkin, but I go by Katie. So I'm going to spell it for you, okay? K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, and then W-L-A-D-I-S-B-H-K-I-N, and then one-two-nine-zero-nine Shaner. So my name's Katie Ladishkin, and, um, I had to write everything down because I've never spoken in public, so I apologize for being a little bit nervous.
You're fine.
So, um, my husband Derek and I moved to Cedar Springs in two thousand and sixteen. Um, and then obviously, we had an option at the time to move anywhere, but we chose Cedar Springs. Because we like the school system and the appeal of a small community. My husband is a firefighter for Cortland Township, and he obviously serves members of the greater Cedar Springs area. Um, our children attend Cedar Springs Public Schools. Our youngest loves visiting the library, actually. Um, we were excited to see the amphitheater being built down by the White Pine Trail. Um, my husband's also been involved with the Cedar Springs Farmers Market in the past and with his small farm. So we've loved the growth that we've seen in the community over the last five and a half years. We were excited to take this investment opportunity, um, by investing in a property, helping residents in the area have affordable and safe housing. Um, sorry, hold on, I'm sorry to read now. Um, we really enjoyed the charm that the sixty-four East Maple has. It's got this Victorian, you know, themed house. And the character it adds to a neighborhood, so we recognized that there was some work that needed to be put into it, but we are excited. He's had a history of building in the past, so we were ready to get our feet wet with putting things, you know, doing the work ourselves. Our intention to restore this home to standards we would want for our own home, okay? And allowing, obviously, like I said, a safe and affordable place for other people. Um, so you've heard the history of the property, um, and how it was a multi-unit dwelling since at least the sixties, but there's no records. We, you could hear testimony from Larry Young, who actually offered to come to, before he left for Florida, he was leaving for Florida. So he said, I'm happy to swing by, talk to the city manager, you know, on your behalf, who can attest that it was a six-unit property for decades prior to his purchase in nineteen ninety-one. Um, the articles I saw, um, regarding zoning from nineteen eighty-two, and I'm not sure if there are newer records, um, specifically talked about non-conforming units, and that non-conforming units, according to the section four point oh one, um, the house should be exempt from R-one zoning as it had been a multifamily unit prior to nineteen eighty-two. Asking us to prove that this unit was a multi-unit property in the sixteen seventies is impossible without records from the city, just as us asking you to prove it wasn't is also equally impossible. Since the city doesn't have those records, I can only infer from the events that took place. Mr. Young was able to purchase the property and restore it, turning it from a six-unit property to a four-unit property, property which he did and would attest to. Given Mr. Young's significant involvement with the city council and city planning and zoning commission, this work would have been above board. Um, and clearly, he got inspections, the electrical splits from the city, and it was inspected yearly and then every three years without incident. I do appreciate the motivations of the council and the city manager in trying to avoid blight in the city of Cedar Springs. Um, sixty-four East Maple is not a property that was one home that you can just knock down a couple walls, and suddenly you're going to have the footprint of a single-family home. It was two homes. That would be impossible to split. Um, it has been a, you know, like a multi-unit property for likely over fifty years. Um, and as of today, um, I'm, you mentioned that discussing things with the city manager, this was a moment for public talk or public speaking. It's been two weeks since my husband Derek reached out to the city manager's office, and we have not received a call back yet. Um, so the only word we got was when our Realtor called us to let us know that we were being told we could not use this as an investment property. Um, so we basically brought the equivalent of a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar investment to a vacant lot, because you'll have to tear it down for it to be usable as a single-family footprint. There's no way to turn that property into one. So to me, this doesn't seem fair. It just seemed wrong, and it really doesn't seem legal to strong-arm this type of zoning. Um, and at least according to the, what I saw from the zoning, it doesn't seem, from nineteen eighty-two, that it doesn't seem that it should be. So thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Derek Ladishkin. Also, twelve nine oh nine Shaner. You can obviously see, uh, that this has been incredibly stressful on us, especially as newer property owners. Um, and just to kind of amplify our commitment to the city, we have three children, I'm soon to be four, that are in the district. Um, I'm on the fire department. We work with Cedar Springs all the time. We mutually aid on the fire that they had. They help us all the time, um, over in Cortland. Um, and as far as the farmers market, um, I sold there for a couple of years. One of the people next to me, she's the owner of Busy Mom Bakery. So we've been active in the community, um, since we've been here, uh, basically. And we continue to be active and want to be active, and that's why we purchased the house in downtown, um, Cedar Springs to be a part of the community. Um, and while we're excited that the city is making a strong commitment towards improving downtown, again, it's the reason why we're investing in the city. Um, we feel that the approach being considered in regards to the multifamily zoning will have the opposite impact on the community, um, that it's meant to have. And here's, uh, some of the reasons why we feel that way. It basically provides a disincentive for owners to make improvements on their properties. Um, why would an owner invest in the property when that investment is stripped of value or is being stripped of value by the city policy, um, that's being proposed? You know, if we have a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar property that's valued at that, because it's a multifamily property, um, if it's a single family, it's not going to be worth that much. And so why would any of these owners be putting money into a property um, when the property isn't going to be able to maintain that value on a sale of the property? In our mind, it just doesn't make sense. Um, we also feel it will further reduce affordable housing in a market that's already tight for everyone. Um, and that includes young couples, uh, those with lower incomes, and especially minorities. And we also provides it, or we feel it provides uncertainty to those already living in the housing. I mean, it's stressful for us, but imagine how the tenants feel knowing that when their landlords sell their house, they're going to be out of a home. Um, we've already had a couple of our long-term renters approach us, asking if we're forced to sell, what's going to happen to them? These are tenants who have been in our building, uh, for over five years that are worried themselves about what this policy and, or how this policy is going to affect them, um, in the long term or in even the short term. And while we again agree that with the intentions, we disagree with the approach and feel that there's better solutions that can be made by the council and the city and the city manager. Uh, for instance, a proactive rental inspection program similar to what the city of Grand Rapids utilizes uh, can maintain safe and healthy living conditions. They've been proving or proven to reduce blight while preserving the value of the properties themselves. Um, enforcing interior codes and making ex-sires comply with city standards is a win-win-win for the tenant, uh, for the landlord, and for the city. And, um, basically, a positive approach that will help ensure that the city of Cedar Springs provides an inclusive housing and vibrant thriving downtown for many years to come. Um, and that's basically all I have, so thank you.
Thank you. You, you get the same four minutes?
My name is Richard Craig. I happen to be Katie's father, um, and she asked me to come tonight because I've. Oh.
You don't have to. If you would like to give your address, it allows us to be able to put it in the record and then respond to you, but you are not required.
Four nine four zero Werner Avenue, Northeast Grand Rapids. Katie asked me to come because I've had a lot of experience with public meetings, being an architect, and most of them positive, and I'm this way positive too, I'm sure. I, I, I just want to say one thing, though. It seemed as though this, the solution to the problem that, that is trying to be solved here is areas or apartments, multifamilies that aren't being taken care of. So to, to just say, well, we won't have them anymore, assuming that all of them are not being taken care of and they're not being properly maintained. So I think there's other ways to do this that don't hurt the people who are doing a good job. They know, when, when we went by it, I mean, it's, it's a very nice property. It's not run down. You know, it doesn't have hinges coming off the, you know what I mean? That's really all I wanted to say is, and, and I'm hoping that after we've had our say, that there'll be some discussions, so we can get an idea kind of what the sense of the council is, so we know where to go from here. Thank you. Craig, C-R-A-I-G.
Yes, Councilor Nixon.
I apologize, but if I try to say your last name, I think I'm going to kill it. So, um, where do you stand right now in this ownership process? Is it yours done deal? You've already signed cashes, changed hands. It is yours forever.
We had to make repairs to it, and we're just afraid.
Sure.
We can't really make repairs and move forward with it.
Because. Okay.
I have a question about, um, Mr. Young. Does Mr. Young have documentation of when he took it from a six to a four?
No. But he has the, you know, the electrician.
Yes.
Work for the city.
Yeah.
So.
I, I'm not saying like specific, I mean, just any kind of documentation that would show.
He's in Florida now, but.
Well, it, it doesn't need to be the second. I just mean, does it exist?
It sounds like it exists in the form of permits that were pulled to put in the electrical boxes.
No.
I don't know.
That was done in like nineteen ninety. I did go back to the store a couple of weeks ago.
Right. I don't doubt that.
Very helpful, but I think this part is coming up with the cabinet saying, oh, you're, you know, like I said, it's so much more readily available now. We have, you know, emails. We have so much more.
Right. I don't doubt that. I myself had a thing with this with a non-conforming fence and had a like, your fence is, and I'm like, I have twelve emails with, you know, from before I was on this city council, and the city didn't have them. So I feel like there's a documentation issue. We're going to need to, and I, I'm not saying they're exact forms, but it's, it's probably not an answer that's helpful tonight, but. But thank you. Do you have anything else?
Well, I, I, I think that this, um, even if it's not specifically on the agenda tonight, I, I think it is. It is good.
Discussion. Excellent. Excellent.
And the attorney has some ideas also.
Okay.
The city attorney, not like the manager attorney. So, we, thank you for coming and speaking to us. With that, we are going to, are there any other public? Got everybody? Okay. We are going to move on to have all my pages numbered here, uh, the adoption of the agenda. And I actually would like to move item F from the consent agenda to make it, not because I think there's anything wrong with it, I just feel like we should talk about it when we're going to spend a million dollars.
Yes.
And, um, it, I mean, it was a planned million dollars. Most of it is not our million dollars. It's a grant. But I feel like we should.
Discuss.
Discuss it. Um, so it's going to be action item E. Under, under action items, under seven, it's going to be F from consent is going to move to item E. And then, does anyone else have anything else?
I also feel on the consent agenda, um, the motion to approve required repairs of the fire truck not to exceed nine thousand dollars. There should be at least a discussion about that too.
Okay, so that's going to be F?
Yes, I, yeah, I guess it could be under action. It has to be taken care of quite quickly, doesn't it?
If you want it to be, yeah.
Okay.
If we want it to be functional.
Yeah. Then we'll go to action.
Okay, so does that work?
Yeah.
Anything else? Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes.
I'll make that motion. I would second.
All those in favor, here, we'll do a roll call since there's some money involved. Uh, Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell, sorry. Ms. Race.
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. Uh, moving on then to action items. Motion to set budget workshop for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. The St. Patrick's Day, so you will get another ridiculously ugly.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Sorry, I believe you've just adopted the agenda and you now have to approve of the consent agenda.
I thought we adopted the consent agenda as part of, we need to vote on the consent agenda. You're right. Thank you. I'm just moving us ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended items A through B.
I'll second that.
And this one I'll do again, a roll call vote. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mister, uh, Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Then moving on to action items, motion to, yes.
The consent agenda. Oh, they're out of.
I would like to modify my motion today. See, even those of us who are up here a while still, it's fine.
Yeah, especially when we're moving stuff around.
Got it. Thank you.
Are we good? Do you want me, do, do you need me to have us vote again? Does the person who seconded agree with the change?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So we got this. We got an agenda. We got a consent agenda. The consent agenda is.
Moving on.
You're moving on to action items. A motion to set a budget workshop for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. That is the second Thursday in March, so it's a bonus Thursday. At six o'clock, does that work for folks?
I'd like to say I usually have better things to do on St. Patrick's Day, but if you guys want it, I'll make the sacrifice.
Um, I won't be able to come right at six.
Okay, what time can you get here?
Seven.
Does seven work for everybody else?
Yes, all the better for me.
It's fine.
And the staff can zoom. I'm totally fine with that because I think six, we're trying to make it easier for the staff.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, can I do it over zoom then?
We're not voting on anything. It's a workshop. Can she zoom in?
We had that discussion last time and there was.
You can't, she could watch but not comment, right?
That would be.
You could also come at seven and just, I mean, again, we're not voting on anything.
Zoom until I can get here basically.
I mean, she wouldn't. Seems so odd. We're not deciding anything.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't know why it would be a problem.
I, you, you read what I printed.
That's.
You could thank the legislature for that.
Okay. That's one of two budget workshops, isn't it?
We're not, again, we're not voting on it. We're just, and you will have the budget ahead of time, right? Or do we get it that day? So you can even like send an email questions ahead or?
Okay, well, I can be here at seven. I just, my husband gets out at six, so I don't have anybody to watch the kids.
Sure. Absolutely. So seven?
Maybe.
Otherwise, do you want to split the difference and do six thirty? And then I only miss half of it?
Six thirty?
Or a half an hour?
I'm, again, it's just, we're trying to accommodate the staff. It's, I'm, I'm done teaching at three in theory. So. Right, well, yeah, but do you get up at stupid dark thirty?
Otherwise, otherwise I can just start zooming at six and then when my husband gets home, I will come in here.
Why don't we do that?
Why don't we do that?
Okay. All right, so. So we are going to sit.
We'll have another one.
Fine.
Okay, and then Ashley will get here when she can get here?
Yep.
Perfect.
All right, everybody.
No, it's, that's part of why we're doing this. Item, uh, so we need to vote on that. And I will do, we don't need a roll call on this. I will just, all those in favor, I will personally need a motion?
I would make that motion.
All those in favor of having a budget workshop on March seventeenth at six P M? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Onto item B, motion to approve the Muni code self-publishing software not to exceed one thousand seven hundred dollars. I am so excited about this.
Yeah.
From the giant phone book paper things that we used to do every decade to try to update, which is why there are not the records that we would like to have.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Muni code self-publishing software not to exceed seventeen hundred dollars.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I'm glad to see it happen too.
Yeah, I'm really, great for technology.
It's just confusing looking through ordinances.
And it's, you know, it's crossed out and it's in this book and it's found and it's just craziness. And then it's.
Getting up with.
This is cheaper also. There's some upfront money, but long run it's going to be cheaper.
It is.
So that's good also and just more accessible for the community, which is important. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to item C, motion to approve perusing petition for response activity panel review according to the seven thirty West Street investigation. And the manager, um, gave you some comments. And then. This is part of our, um, conversation that we had with the attorneys and the engineer.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to kind of walk you through it?
Sure.
So basically.
Not talked about. Talked about in closed session.
So basically, uh, there is a specialized body within Eagle, which is supposed to make determinations uh, based upon, I guess, questions of science. Uh, the city's position is that there's a clay layer that differentiates, uh, the shallow aquifer from the deep aquifer. Um, Eagle feels otherwise. The, the question though is that it costs thirty-five hundred dollars to apply. Uh, technically my spending limit is three thousand dollars on behalf of the city. Uh, but there's also some political considerations, uh, in choosing that path. So I wanted to bring it to council to, uh, I guess, decide whether that's something we'd like to pursue. Um, and you have my notes discussing kind of in greater detail, uh, the positives and negatives of doing so.
Good question, Ms. Atchison.
Um, I just thought that we had already discussed that and I thought we had already decided to go that route.
Am I wrong?
I think he needs.
We just had a discussion about it.
Right. You can't vote.
Yeah, we didn't make a decision.
You can't vote in closed session. We could do a straw poll.
Right.
And.
Okay, I get it. Yeah.
So he's asking for official approval to spend the money.
I say I would go, I, I definitely would.
Okay, would you like to make that motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? That being said then, Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I must have missed it. Was that a motion in support of pursuing, uh, the specialty board? Yes, okay, thank you.
In, uh, did you want an amount of money attached? Because it doesn't say that in the motion.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, I guess if somebody would modify it, uh, to allow me to pursue it at least at the cost of thirty-five hundred dollars because that's the application.
I would like a motion to not exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay? I'm going to just do all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. All right, thirty-five hundred dollars, friend. See what you can do. Motion to approve the Williams and Works Professional Services Agreement for planning consultation services.
I'll make that motion.
I would second. I'm tickled with planner. Yay.
Any discussion? I will just say that, um, the Planning Commission Chair sat on a interview with this person and was very impressed. This is, um, because I said, well, you're, you know, everybody's retiring, right? So this person's probably going to be wonderful, but they're probably going to be twenty-one, but, and they are not. They're, uh, uh, experienced, um, lots of background person and the Planning Commission Chair was thrilled and said, really excited. And we, we've had some, we've had some struggles with some planners in the past, not the one who just retired. They were wonderful, but you all will recall.
There you go.
Um, there was one, there was a bit of a struggle and so the Planning Commission Chair was, um, making sure that this would be a good fit and felt that this person is a good fit for the community. So I have that high recommendation. And so with that, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll take a vote. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to item E, which is a motion to approve the West Street Industrial Park Project bid by Dean's Land and Excavating for a total bid amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. And directs the city manager route engineering to execute the contract. And we have some things in our manager's notes about this, but this is, um, very exciting. There's a big, there's a big grant attached to it. Most of this is not city money. Um, Mr. Manager, can you speak to this a little bit?
Sure, we've been working on this project for a long time. Um, Ms. Falcon obviously did a, a ton of work on this as well as along with the rest of staff. Uh, so I appreciate all the work that they put into it. Um, it was pushed back for a long time because we were re-engineering the project because we ran into some speed bumps we weren't, uh, quite sure about. Um, but I'm very satisfied with the quote we got from Dean's. Um, I think it's a good quote and I'm looking forward to getting this project completed. So I would ask that the, uh, council approve of that amount.
And just to clarify what this project is for the people that are watching and listening at home, because I'm sure we're so exciting on YouTube.
Yep, so the city, uh, received an E D A grant for almost nine hundred thousand dollars, I think. Um, I'm sure Ms. Falcon could tell you the exact amount, uh, but this is an extension of West Street to the south uh, on city-owned property. We have, I think, fifty-five acres of land out there. Um, and the E D A agree, agreed that it would make a good business park. Uh, so with the extension of road, water and sewer to that location, uh, we'll have, I think, forty-ish or forty-five-ish acres that the city can sell off to businesses, uh, to develop a business park for the city. Uh, so we'll be bringing a new.
Is paying for road, water and sewer to be extended out there.
Correct, and, uh, hopefully we'll bring in some good businesses that will both, uh, help pay property taxes and will develop some jobs for the people living in the community.
So, and then extend throughout that some more of our water system to close part of that loop and extend the road. So that's just very exciting and I thought we cannot bury that in our consent agenda.
I agree.
So with that, do I have a motion?
I would make that motion. Second.
And I will do any other discussion? I will do roll call. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to item F, a motion to approve required repairs for the two thousand and four International Fire Truck in an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars.
I would make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, yes. Um, I see we've stripped parts off of the former truck and, uh, don't know what to do with it. And I'd like to hear, um, Mr. Frazier's, uh, what he would think we should do with the old truck because I really don't have his opinion on that.
Agree.
Mm-hmm. There's like four options outlined in our notes.
Yes, but I don't know what.
Like which ones.
Mister, Mister Frazier would like us to do with the old truck. What his idea is. Well, Marty.
Um, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear us?
I wasn't aware that Mrs. Powell was informed that we have stripped parts off the old truck. We have not done anything with the old truck. It's still in service until I get approval from the board to make repairs, minor, minor repairs, but quite a few of them, um, to the new purchase before we put that truck in service. That truck will not go into service if it's not road safe and road ready. Um, I brought it to staff meeting a couple of weeks ago and Mr. Womack, uh, pointed out that it is a cost of over three thousand dollars, which is our limit. And I needed council approval to have them repairs done.
Yeah, I think they're two separate things. Just to clarify, am I right, Mr. Frazier? The possibility to use the old truck for parts is separate from the repairs that we need on this quote-unquote new truck, this new-to-us-used truck that we're buying. Am I correct?
I'm sure I'm interpreting this different than, uh, the parts of the truck. I take like generators and, and batteries or something. No, that's not the case. What will take off of the truck is the hose, uh, the axes, the nozzles and that type of stuff for firefighting. Um, I had proposed a couple of different options to Mr. Womack about getting rid of that truck, putting it up for auction. It, it, it's thirty-six years old. It does what it needs to do. However, it's not recognized, um, through ISO as a frontline pumper anymore. After twenty years, they don't recognize them as a frontline pump. It, excuse me, it could be donated to a department, uh, randomly possibly up in the U P or something with, uh, a statement stating as-is. It has a minor leak in the water manifold that we are aware of and, uh, that's a price tag is somewhere around a thousand dollars to have repaired. We've elected to replace that truck with this truck that is a two thousand and four, which is eighteen years old, which will serve us well for a lot of years. My, my thought on that is, is I need permission from the council tonight to, to spend that kind of money to bring that truck. It, it's minor stuff like, uh, it doesn't hold a vacuum under pressure a hundred percent like it should. Um, there's some, uh, levers and knobs that need to be adjusted and greased. Uh, we need to, just minor little things, but there's numerous, uh, things that, uh, you know, parts, I think parts and labor are pretty even and it's, I've got a quote, I think of around eighty-three hundred dollars, but Mr. Womack, give me a little bit of.
Of course, because stuff, there's stuff.
Yeah.
Absolutely. No, but I think, I think we just needed to clarify what was happening with the old truck. We have, I think, four options that they would like us to kind of think about.
Okay. Yeah.
But that's not what we're voting on and it, it's not really impactful other than to clarify, like you were going to take some hoses and equipment off of it.
Good, thank you.
So.
Might I add, Madam Mayor, that we have the room for, uh, to store that truck for a while so we don't have to do anything within the next two weeks, two months. You know, I, I would prefer it's out of the building. By the end of the year, however, you know, we do have the facility to store that for a while and it, it's nothing that we have to take action on in the near future.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Powell?
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear your side of the story.
Glad we could clarify that. So there's a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
And any other discussion or questions? Then I will do a vote. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to discussion items. Moving on to discussion items. Item A, discussion on sidewalk policy. We've been talking about this for a while. Anybody have any more thoughts?
It's it's a conundrum, that's for sure.
Well, I really like the idea of creating a pool of money. The city puts in from marijuana money, if we can apply, you know, if it's a CBDG grant, if it's a, I don't know, whatever it is. CBDG, I guess, has to have a specific location, but um collecting a pool of money, maybe we dedicate a certain amount, you know, ten thousand dollars or something, we have the budget coming up. And then we allow people to apply to do a half payment, a quarter payment, uh we'd need to figure out a percentage and say, you know, you get it lower if it's, there's four of you together or a block or so on, kind of like we did on Fifth Street a long time ago. And the city will subsidize half out of this pool and then you pay the other half and we let you um amortize it over three years, five years, something like that on your taxes. We could have some more specifics on the numbers at the budget meeting with
I I agree with that, I just don't know like what I'd be comfortable with putting into the pool until we know like how many people we need to like give money to.
We need a lot, like we're going to have to fund it over a period of time.
We're going to run out of the money the first year, but we're going to have to find ways going forward to fund it.
Right, but that that will affect whether I want it to be seventy-five, twenty-five or fifty-fifty is what I'm saying.
Sure.
Then we can't be saying that we'll pay for seventy-five if we can't the next year.
Sure.
I have a question for you, actually for Sally, realtor, right? Um, when someone buys a home, are are they aware that they're actually buying the sidewalk in front of their home?
Yes, I mean, it's part of the city, part of the
Yeah.
But then when you're putting, you're discussing that, if there is an assessment on that property, that has to be recorded on the title.
Right.
It's just like when someone buys new windows, they're ten thousand dollars, or you owe ten thousand dollars on these windows. Buyer just can't buy a house and go. Buyer owns ten thousand dollars for the window. So, yeah, so it's the same thing, but it has to be marked on
Right.
I just was curious.
Yeah, and then it has to be, like, it'll be, it'll be actually part of their tax bill. Like, that's when they would pay it.
Does it specifically say sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know because I I just want to know, you know, for me, I didn't buy the home, my husband did years ago and I kind of moved in and I had no idea, I just thought, I knew we needed to shovel it and keep it clean for the safety of whatever, I mean, it's having sense, I think, but I just didn't know that until, I mean
We actually have to pay taxes to the middle of the street. And I don't know if you've ever had drains, right? Am I right?
We have a drain right next to our driveway, so
Well, we have been, we have had to dig under the street because you, we own to the hook-on
Yeah.
In the middle of the street, so
Well, those are just things that, you know, I don't know everything about the city and all of those things, but that's why I'm here to discuss and learn.
When we have the budget meeting, this would be part of the conversation when we're trying, this is why this is a discussion item right now.
Yeah.
And I would say to you, think about things like, how much money do you want to be able, because we have an enormous amount of sidewalks that need to be done. I mean, they're huge. And think about how much money do you want to try to allocate per year to get to a place where we get all of the sidewalks in the city? And then I would say, if you want to do that, then we need to make that part of our budget each year.
Yeah.
Now, you will have the percentage that we have the citizens paying roll back into it on the amortization. So, I mean, you do have that piece of it to fund back.
Yeah.
When you're looking at like three years or five years, because that'll be a piece too, um, when you're trying to decide it's the balance between how much difficulty is it for the homeowner, if you're trying to spread it out over several years versus how long before the city gets the money back to roll back into the next set of sidewalks.
Yeah, so we would have to pay for it first.
The city will.
In other words, before they pay, if they're paying overtime.
We're putting it up front.
Okay.
Even if we're going to, even if we're splitting it.
Right, assuming assuming people want it amortized. There's usually a slight fee, I mean, not necessarily a lot, but there'll be some. So there might be some people who just choose to pay for it upfront. Sure. Um, some of it is they've never been put down at all, so there just aren't sidewalks, um, like Mr. Merlington has a sidewalk that goes to nowhere.
Yeah.
Um, some of it is they're three feet wide. Some of it is they're forty-five years old.
And they've sunk.
Or tipped up or
From the tree roots.
Some of it is, um, when, I I have brand-new beautiful sidewalk because we chose to do that, but um before that, we would mow our sidewalk. Because it was more grass than concrete. So, um, I think the sidewalk was probably put in somewhere in the nineteen forties or fifties prior to the one, yeah? I I believe I
It it is on your personal property, so you, that would fall into your homeowners, wouldn't it?
I'm not sure, that's a legal question for our attorney, because the city, the city sidewalks are like public space. Like, you can stand on a sidewalk to collect
They can't walk on the sidewalk, that's why you can't walk the sidewalk with your vehicle, because they can't go into the road, so you can't force people off the sidewalk.
And like, kids can ride their bikes on the sidewalk and people walk on the sidewalk, it's it's literally public space. I feel like it's shared liability, but I could be wrong, that's a, that's a question for our attorney to ask on that.
One thing that you might want to think about is if, like, when you guys put in your sidewalks, the whole block did it.
We did.
So let's say, the guy in the middle says, I don't want no sidewalks. So you're going to have sidewalks come into that house and the rest is
That's the carrot versus stick approach.
Yeah.
As opposed to saying, we're putting in sidewalks and we're charging it on your taxes.
Right, so it's be be something will have to be in the policy to cover that sort of thing, because not everybody's going to want it, they're saying, well, let's just find what I have.
I think, I think the um strategy there would be to maybe provide additional amounts, like maybe we do a fifty to a seventy-five or a fifty to a sixty-five if
All the people.
All of the people on your block are willing or all, you know, or you have six people in a row or something to that effect. And part of that is, it also gets cheaper. That was part of why we all, when we collectively did it and we were doing it without any city support, is it was cheaper for us, for the whole block to do it.
But I would
It could happen though.
Correct me if I, you're wrong, I'm wrong, but I would think that there would need to be an opposite incentive to not just be the one person on the block who is going to be like, nope, and then all those five people or six people, seven people now have to struggle to pay for it.
Well, except that person then wouldn't get their sidewalk.
You're going to have to pay for it.
My understanding is that the other side of this was the stick. Is that if we really have to make you put in sidewalks?
Then it won't be
You will pay seventy-five percent of this and you will pay twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yeah.
We actually have the power, and I'm not advocating that we use it, but we have the power to say, you will put in sidewalks and you will pay for it all.
One thousand percent, I think people should
We can even make you pay for it all right now.
Yeah.
And now, again, I'm not, I'm not advocating that that's what our policy should be.
No, I think it should, it should be that we help.
Right.
For sure, and then, but if you're going to not comply with the help, then there's not really much left to do then. Then make you pay for it.
And it's for the safety of the community.
It is, and we're trying to make a walkable community, we're trying to make it ADA compliant, because the three-foot sidewalks that are cracked are not sufficient for people who need, you know, ADA compli- what, what was the term that the engineer used when we talked about the park? It's beyond ADA, used a term.
Can't remember.
Anyway, that's, that is now my, like, new gold star, is I want all of our things to be beyond ADA compliant. I want them to be fully, fully accessible.
To summarize, what I, what I think I've heard is it sounds like a fifty-fifty split, if you're willing to come forward and sign up is good. The, you pay seventy-five, we pay twenty-five if we have to come after you and enforce it. And also, if the standard is now going to be the five-foot wide sidewalks, that means ninety-five percent of our community now needs to replace their sidewalks.
Right.
Yeah.
That is where we at, there, I mean, those are not compliant. Now, I would advocate, we start with the ones that are the worst. But I think you also
Do it in phases?
We're going to have to do it.
We're going to have to, we won't have the money to support.
I mean, this is going to be a ten-year
Well, and there are also still possibly grants that we can go for.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Along with it, so, I mean, you know, they they could still come up occasionally. We're just, I mean, that, you know, that would be one way, but we'd probably still have to find other ways to fund.
And I would advocate that we start with the people who want it.
Yeah.
Oh, for sure.
There would, and you literally have a sign-up and say, this is how much money we have. And if you can get this many people, you get this much more, if you can get them all in a row. And we'll start with the people who want it.
Well, the only issue with that is the people that want it, probably are peo- other people that are keeping their sidewalks in good condition now. And they probably won't be the ones that have the worst ones.
I don't know, mine was pretty horrendous.
Or if we, I mean, if
Hopefully they will be.
Phases, though, if you're doing it in phases, then it would be this area who wants it in this area, so it's targeted, but it's also starting with people who are voluntary.
Right.
Yeah, I like that.
That's my, that's my thought, and then you use more sticks as you, as we move forward to your
So we've gotten through, so say we got through seventy-five percent of this area that we have targeted on this year and now we have to talk to the rest of you about your sidewalks.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. And I would argue it's, it's not our responsibility and it will create undue work for our office staff to try to coordinate six or seven neighbors if they, because we're, we're on
They need, they need to do it.
Yeah, the, we're working on a percentage. So you present us with what the bill is and we're working on a percentage, if you can find a way to lower that bill, that lowers your percentage as well. So
Yeah. That was, I mean, and again, having, you know, we did it ourselves and hired a company and paid it ourselves and just chose to do our block.
Yeah.
Because it was terrible. And we're really, I've never regretted that, you know, and I have, I had one of the longer stretches. And I've been grateful every day for that several thousand dollars.
You know, I live in a very large development up here, so you know, anytime in the summer, anytime, and I mean, we have, they added all those new homes back there, there's a lot of younger people.
There's no sidewalks in there, it's there.
I mean, they're like active and they're, I mean, they're using our sidewalks and red flannel, it's literally just
Busy.
Everywhere, so people are walking from
Yeah.
the outskirts to get downtown and they have to be safe, you know, lots of kids and it's just important, yeah.
We'd rather have them on the sidewalks than in the road.
Yeah.
So absolutely, okay, any other input then? So think some more, be prepared to come to the budget meeting with some ideas.
Sure.
Moving on to the the fences, oh boy. The ordinance to amend chapter forty, section forty, forty-six, forty-four, forty dash four forty-six of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Cedar Springs entitled Walls and Fences, first reading. And the, the Planning Commission has spent, I think, a year on this, I don't know, a long time.
So, I've I've tried to read this and I have questions.
Okay.
Um, it is not clear to me what the proposed action is. Are are we going to write a ticket if they don't get a permit, whereas before we didn't? Are we making them tear it down if they didn't get a permit or what?
Mr. Manager, can you, there is some stuff in the notes on this, but can you expand on this?
Sure, so similar to uh one of the previous items, we're really only doing a first reading on a proposed ordinance at this point. Uh, everything else is kind of side policy discussion. Now, the side policy discussion is that City Hall has been, I guess, very soft uh in the application of the fence ordinance, the previous fence ordinance. Uh, now is perhaps a good time to uh a- address and possibly change that policy. So, you know, we we deal with fences every day of the week. And I I believe the code enforcement officer and I would tell you that perhaps seventy-five percent of all fences that are put up in the city are done so without a permit. Uh, permits are required for all fences. And so, uh, I I'm wondering whether this board believes that a shift in policy regarding how and when we ticket people regarding fences, uh, whether that would increase the number of people who would actually get the permits that are required of them instead of simply putting up a fence and having us catch them at some later date. Uh, it's, it's a constant issue that we have with fences and pools and converting single-family homes to multifamily homes. So i- i- it's something I just, if you want to weigh in on it, I'd appreciate it. If not, uh, what I'll probably end up doing is campaigning, uh, putting together a public campaign uh to better inform the public of what's required of them. And then simply shift from the policy of not ticketing to ticketing. Uh, because, you know, we've had a number of illegal fences go up uh that I've then had to say, hey, sorry, you got to take that back down. And I get the same argument every time, well, it costs me X number of dollars to put it up. Well, I don't care how expensive it is, it just, you you need to get a permit first and, you know, the fence that you put up doesn't match with what our rules require. Um, so I'm just a little sick and tired of the city being the bad guy in the situation. Um, and I just wonder if it's a better policy shift um to basically enforce our laws. So I'm happy for any discussion the council might have.
Um, and I can, I can have quite a bit of discussion about this, having, I'm I'm in the seat in part over a fence. So Ronnie Merlington, if you're watching us. So, I will tell you, Mike, um, two city managers ago and a mayor who was a DPW director ago, I went to put up a fence around my pool and um we were going to call it our big white baby cage, because my now high school freshman was at the time a toddler. And we were trying to keep him from running into the road. And the DPW director who lived next door to me said, you're going to need to go to City Hall and get a permit for five dollars to put up a fence, and they'll give you all the stuff on the how high and what kind and so on. So I came into City Hall to do that and was adamantly told by the city manager at the time that there is no policy on fencing and there is no permit and there is no, there's nothing other than the, what the Muni Code says for ordinances, and we went and looked and six-foot high and a certain setback. Okay, so we bought very expensive white vinyl fencing and we put it up and um got a letter from the at-the-time um Assistant Deputy Director of DPW saying, you need to take your fence down or else. That was actually the actual wording. Um, okay. So then we could not find anything about this five-dollar thing or where any of the codes are. So I would advocate that part of the problem is that we have not been consistent. Because I I literally came in and asked for a permit and was told no on the fencing and which is why, but then when you were trying to get documentation, you were saying, well, I know that one of the people on the Planning Commission has a non-conforming fence. Um, and then I think you got like nine emails for the documentation on it. Um, I think that's going to be part of our problem. I do think that it's totally appropriate to have a five-dollar permit. I really appreciate the idea of Ms. Dig and saying, you know, so that you notify Ms. Dig before you put holes in the ground. Um, I think that we, if we do a big campaign, I appreciate the manager's idea of doing that. But I think we need to make it clear that, like, this is now the policy. Because it was not the policy ten years ago. Or at least it was not the policy in a way that this person who actively came in and tried to do it could implement. So I think that's gonna be part of what we're battling.
I think we need to educate our citizens, of course, and, uh, one way to do that would be to put it on the water bill or tax bill or something. Just remember, if you're gonna build a fence, get a permit.
Maybe put an ad in the paper.
Well, how long are we gonna have a paper? But they're gonna get a water bill.
That's part of why they need it. I'm saying in addition, maybe, but we can also throw a little money.
Educating how important the Miss Dig aspect is and how you shouldn't be, your fence should not block the sidewalk or the driveway view. Very important.
I think the whole point of the permit is that you pay five dollars to make sure that none of that stuff happens.
Right.
Right.
And it really is a benefit to the citizens because you're paying five dollars for somebody to say like, yep, you're good, go ahead, spend that money.
Yes.
As opposed to spending all the money.
And then you have a doc, and then you have a paper document trail.
Exactly. So.
And you can't say, oh, well, we didn't know about that.
The reason I have the paper trail I do is because I came in to get the five dollar permit, was told there wasn't one. And I said that I want you to put that in writing.
Yeah, good.
Because that's how I roll with that particular city manager. And she did put it in writing, in an email that I have fourteen years.
It helps.
But I think that's, that is a piece of that. And we do have fencing that, um, like we have fencing with barbed wire on it in our community. Like I was walking my dog.
Zone, there's still some barbed wire.
And I like walked by it and went, wow, there's like barbed wire up above.
It's allowed, yeah. In the industrial.
Yeah, I know. I went and looked it up. But it's not pretty on the white pine trail. And I just don't know, I'm like, do you really, is it needed?
Apparently, stuff was getting stolen from those lots.
So Mrs. Powell, if I could point something out, under the old ordinance, um, forty dash four four six, it specifically says, no person shall place string or maintain barbed wire in any zoning district. So again, uh, this law goes back to nineteen eighty-two at the very earliest. Um, so has the barbed wire been erected in the city since eighty-two? Because if it was, it should not have been permitted. Or was it put up without a permit?
I have no idea when it was put up.
You should know that, Rose.
I do know they were getting a lot of stuff stolen out of their, their lot.
The, the shipping place? The boat place? Cause that's where the, I mean, like when we walk our dogs on the white pine trail, it's, I was like, yeah, the place that, the sale place that does the boats? That works on boats.
They don't have it there across the.
They do have barbed wire there. I
Sale place has barbed wire.
I, I walked my dog past.
I can't say I noticed it there.
Well, later. So I, yeah, it, it sounds like no one is, at least on the face opposed to there being a fence ticketing policy. Okay.
No. So, but we do feel like we agree that the manager should have a period of time of education. Where we get this out there, we put it on water bills. Tell people like, this is the thing, if you're gonna put up a fence. From here on out, this is what you need to do.
So we knew, need to know what it is and the public needs to know what it is.
Yeah.
And then you would get a permit for it, which would provide documentation that says that fence exists and you've been given permission to do it. So, and we're, we're seriously talking about five dollars. That is the fee that we are talking about attaching. So to try to increase that. So this is the first reading. Any thoughts on any of the language from the planning commission?
I just, I thought they did a good job.
They do an amazing job. They work crazy hard. And Ashley, you were probably even, because that has been so long in the making.
Yep, I had some opinions on this.
Do you want to expand on anything on it?
No, I thought it was, well, whatever.
Okay. And Rose, who attends all meetings of everything, do you have any?
Uh, I, I just think it was a great policy for, especially for folks that have supposedly two front yards. Fix that was huge, you know? Give people a break.
Yeah, yep, that was, I mean.
Yeah.
And then they try to give you two addresses, then it gets really interesting. Uh, okay, so then any other discussion? We're gonna move on. Moving on to the discussion on the new water well house, the initial investigation estimated to cost forty thousand dollars and the land purchase estimate to cost sixty-five thousand dollars. And we aren't voting on this, but we're giving the manager some direction on is this a thing that we're looking to do? So thoughts on it?
My understanding was that we needed a new well because perhaps the ones we have been in service a long time.
Well, this is actually like an expansion. I mean, yes, it does allow us to take one offline. But we've been annexing properties that have come to ask us to be annexed, to be joined onto the city as part of like the four twenty-five and so on. And then we built how many houses? So we just
County's coming too.
We just literally need more water.
And is it, by understanding, this is the land at the end of Ash Street.
Yeah, the one, yep, the issues.
Which would also solve that problem in theory?
Would, it would be a little busy for them for a minute, but, um, it would not be anymore.
Falling and whatever.
Yes. Yay.
This is discussion.
This is discussion, but that we just, the manager would like to know, because this isn't emergent.
If he should invest.
If this is the direction that we would like to go, it is a, it's a good chunk of money. I mean, we're talking about a, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and he and I had a, a quite a long conversation about, um, because this is obviously not all of it. I mean, there will have to be additional pieces. And I said, you know, we don't have to pay for it all at once.
No, but I think it's, it's something in the interest of being proactive. It's something that we should invest in. Um, clean water is a huge asset.
Right?
Yeah, and we don't wanna, it's not urgent now, so we have time to save for it.
Right. That was kind of what I said.
You don't really talk about it and then you're like, no, we, no, you don't.
Now we have to spend a million dollars. Right. So water towers are not cheap. Like at some point, we're gonna have to have a second water tower. And as we head into those pieces, the more of this we can front and load, the more ready we are.
Yep.
And Cedar Springs, we are just exploding.
We're just popping.
We are. So we have to make sure everybody has access to water.
Yeah, or else stop building and we don't wanna do that either.
Well, I don't even know that we can. I mean, it's not us that's, you know, I don't have the ability, like when people were quite upset that there was another auto parts store and why did, they're gonna come to tell us about why that should happen. I did not build that auto store.
So it sounds like the general consensus is yes, this is a good thing.
Comments or feelings on this, Mister Manager?
Sorry, I just wanted to expand on something that Ms. Powell said, and that is we, we can't just stop growing or building. Um, and that's part of the issue is that uh, there's a complicated formula that I'm sure Mr. LaRose could go into greater detail on if you want. Uh, but Eagle imposes certain requirements on how much water you can produce and how much water you have to produce in a given day. Um, and our wellhouse three, which is, you know, significantly older than me and everybody on council, um, has had some fluctuations in the water that it's been able to produce over the last couple of years. So you combine that, uh, with the hundred and eight homes being built in Prairie Run North and the potential for a multifamily, um, unit development. Um, and we just wanna get a step ahead because these things take between eighteen months and two years uh, to really build out. And that's if you have all the funding lined up. And currently we don't. Uh, so I'd like to be able to get the land that we proposed to put the wellhouse on, uh, which is what we're talking about here today. Um, so what would happen is between now and then, it sounds like council's on board, um, is that I would put together a contract, uh, with the land owner that would give us an option to purchase subsequent to doing the initial investigation. So hopefully by next month or the next month after that, the latest, I'd be able to bring back both approval for the initial investigation and the options contract. Now, the options contract would only be probably three to five thousand bucks. Uh, but the investigation would be about forty. And then at some point in the future, after the investigation, we would then ask for the purchase, uh, which is estimated to be about sixty-five.
And then the next piece would be to actually drill the well and
How far into the future are we talking?
Do you have a timeframe, Mister Manager?
Um, so when, when you ask Mister LaRose, it's always twenty-four months regardless of how, you know, how much time has gone by. But, but yeah, I mean, it depends on a lot of factors, but I'm guessing between twelve and twenty-four months.
And that number, I mean, can change, right? I mean, these are prices that are
We don't know exactly what we would buy the land for. We don't know
Whatever.
Um, what the initial invest, the investigation costs will be, because that's the engineering. Does, you know, how far do you have to drill? What is the geologic piece is? What's the? And then the actual drilling can vary because it depends where do you hit the water and how much does the piping cost at the time? You know, welcome to the world of steel and concrete and so on. So, yeah, this, I mean, it's
Well estimated, so, yeah.
The, the, the total project, sorry, the total project cost is over half a, half a million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
So thank you for moving forward on that. Yes, we think it's a good idea. I'm talking to the ceiling.
Like she's talking to, yeah.
I'm talking to God, right? City manager, all the same. Uh, discussion of non-conforming multifamily dwellings. There is maple and beach and I see we have a place in here for additional public comment. So, and I would allow that anyway, because obviously this is a, a difficult piece. Yeah.
Sorry, not quite. Uh, we received public comments from Ms. Ranky.
That said, I would allow people to ask a question or have some input. Um, we do have some specific details. I appreciated you, um, turping this to our attorney. Would you like to talk about that at all, Mister Manager? About some of our attorney's recommendation or do you not feel that that's quite a good place to go live yet?
Yeah, well, I mean, this is obviously a very complicated subject. But, you know, my understanding has been that council, planning commission, lots of citizens have not been happy with the state of the R-one residential district. Um, and my understanding of the illegal conversions of single family homes to multifamily homes. Um, so I, I, I understand some of the things that were said today, um, and of course, I'm very sympathetic. Uh, but it's a much more complicated subjects, you know, than it's being presented. So, you, you know, when we don't have records of these were legally converted from single family homes and honestly, I, I don't know how they could be, not with the current state of the law. Uh, I'm forced to accept that, you know, there, there's no records because there never was any permission given. Um, and again, I, I feel bad and I'm, I'm empathetic and sympathetic to the situation. Um, but I'm only going where I understand the law requires me to go. Now, the previous owners of the maple property were notified that their property was potentially, uh, non-conforming or illegally non-conforming. I believe back in July. Uh, so this is not, it should not be a surprise to the previous owners. Um, now I understand that the current purchasers and current owners, uh, may have been unawares. Uh, but the previous owners were aware. And that might be a private issue between the current owners and the previous owners. Um, but, um, as Madam Mayor, you were indicating, uh, I've been discussing this with the city attorney and I think there might be a solution here. Um, especially moving forward as Ms. Ranky had indicated. Um, you know, the city staff have done what we thought was best and that is notify the current or previous owners in the situation uh, about this, the legal situation regarding their properties. However, as we've seen, uh, if the current owners wish to sell and they don't wish to disclose that they might be in possession of non-conforming properties, uh, that can put the new owners into a very tough spot. So I don't, so I don't unfortunately have, uh, the perfect solution at tonight's meeting. Uh, but I did present you guys with some notes about what was possible. Um, so I, you know, i- i- it's kind of a policy question. If I'm not given other policy directions, uh, I'm gonna go and do what the law says I should do. Uh, which is force this, this home that was sold, force the home that was burnt down recently uh, to convert to the requirements of the district in which they're located, which is single family residential use.
And I know you and I have had some conversations, um, this doesn't pertain to any of the folks that are here tonight. But like I have some concerns about at least one of the places that has been divided into, I don't even know how many of, does it actually have enough legal square footage to be like legal? Um, I was in one of those once upon a time and I could like touch my fingers. And I am not a very big person. And That's one of the things, I don't know that if we've been, we have a, um, a square footage requirement in our, our rental, um, but I don't know that we are measuring.
Well, it's a little bit more than that, Madam Mayor, and you, and you are touching upon a very important part. The city has a rental registration and rental inspection program. Uh, but I see that, and I believe the city sees it differently and separate from the zoning approval requirements. Uh, the rental registration and rental inspections are a safety, uh, issue for the very reason that you're indicating.
Right.
Uh, there are minimum size requirements of bedrooms. I think it's nine foot by seven foot, which there's no way you could reach your arms out and touch either wall.
Nope.
We, we have found water heaters in, uh, the closets of children's bedrooms during rental inspections. So, you know, we have these people who are, uh, trying to convert single family homes into multifamily homes and doing these very shady, dangerous type activities. Cause that's how it works for them. That's how they're able to make money. Uh, that's, you know, and frankly, they don't care about the safety of the citizens. We do. Um, but so it's, it's a very complicated issue.
We're talking about people who do these things.
Yeah.
We aren't saying you. We're saying there are places for which this is happening and that's our concern. Yeah.
I, I just, I think that we need to find a way to number one um, figure out these places that don't conform and, and take each, I think we're gonna have to take each multifamily unit that's not conforming and look at each unit.
Yep.
Now, okay? In each unit, we're gonna have to look at them and try and figure out what we're gonna be able to do.
That was some of what, did you read the piece on the recommendations from the attorney? That's kind of where he
Right. And then, and then in the future, we're gonna have to set this date.
Yes.
Figure out what we're doing. And then in the future, we cannot have non-conforming people
And, and I don't think
Doing what they do.
I don't think it has anything to do with like people, I mean, it doesn't for me anyway, having anything to do with not wanting a rental property next door to you. I mean, I literally bought the house next door to me and moved my parents in and I'm now getting the house ready to rent. That will literally be next door to me. So I mean, I don't have a problem with someone renting next door to me.
I just have a hard time tying people's hands that are actually have a, a a multifamily unit that's been a multifamily unit for years. And they just, you know, in tying their hands and not being able to
Right. But at the same time, when someone tries to take a house and not tell you and divide it into twelve, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna rent you these, these eight square feet.
Right.
And it's just, and there's some of that happening.
Can I ask a, like a question too?
Let's see, Ms. Atchison, before we move on, I just wanna make sure we point out from a legal perspective, it does not matter how long they've been multifamily rentals. If they never got legal permission to be converted to a rent, a multifamily unit in a single family residential district, it never becomes legal.
Well, the problem is we can't prove that it wasn't and they can't prove that it was because it was so long ago. That's where I'm saying that things mesh together when, when, one, one way or the other, we can't prove it. So the other thing I'm, I need to ask is The other thing I'm, I need to ask is, when we know it's a, um, non-conforming. There was mentioned that it should be put on a title. I don't know how that is done. Once it comes up, because then that could have been found out by the buyers, if it was on the title.
Well, so as Ms. Ranky.
They need a permit, right? So, I have a question. So, part of this is about the zone.
Madam Mayor, would you like to answer Ms. Atchison's question first?
Sure, sure, go ahead. But it's, I have a piggyback that goes on to what she's talking about.
Okay, so during, during the purchase of a house, you're supposed to do a title search. And if you do a title search, the purchaser of the home is put on legal notice if they find something in the title. Which indicates that it's a non-conforming or an illegal use. And so what we would do, this is a possibility. Is that we would approach all the illegal or non-conforming homes in the district that we've identified. And tell them, you have to put something in your chain of title indicating that it's non-conforming property, and that if it gets sold, it has to be converted to single-family use. Which is what the city attempted to do with our own staff, except that didn't go into title. So unfortunately, the current purchasers of the sixty-four Maple property were apparently caught unawares.
So, this is my question. So, part of this is about the zoning district, correct? Because we have.
Yes.
We have zoning districts that we allow duplexes, and we allow, right? When did we establish these zoning districts?
Currently, we have records to go back to at least nineteen eighty-two. And we strongly suspect that they were the same long before that as well.
But we don't, but we don't have anything before nineteen eighty-two on zoning districts?
Uh, I, I'm not aware of any records at this time.
So, if people had documentation of any kind that says that this was a multifamily residence prior to those zoning setups. Then they should be grandfathered in, right?
Theoretically speaking, if we're accepting the fact, uh, nineteen eighty-two is a starting point. Although I do, although, although I do appreciate Ms. Ranky pointing out that it was converted from a six unit to a four unit, I believe she said in the nineties. Because then, that's obviously past eighty-two and would be subject to the city's laws.
But if the permits were pulled for that in ninety-one. Didn't the city give permission to have four electrical panels in one house?
So, electrical panels are not zoning approvals. And so the zoning approval would have required ZBA approval as a variance.
So, my opinion is, it's the city has known it was a problem for a really long time. And so I, and I'm a total rule follower, and I'm in law enforcement, and I totally like, if there's a rule, it should be followed. That's my opinion on pretty much everything. But if the city has taken a step back from enforcing it for so long. I feel like such a harsh comeback is not, it's just not fair.
If I may.
Sure, Ms. Nixon.
I think we are far into the land of unintended consequences.
Yeah.
So. I think the initial intent was, we didn't want people to make duplexes in the R1 district.
Or, or octuplexes.
Well, whatever. In, in any case, I think the initial intent was, we didn't want this happening illegally. Because typically, the people who do it illegally are not to code, and there's lots of issues there. We didn't want a myriad of people living unsafe in one structure. And we didn't want the cars and all the traffic that came with that, so that now you have three of the neighbors' cars on your lawn. There were other problems that we.
Yeah, that was a major one.
Sure. And, and, and trying to address that. And I, I have to say that the city manager only has the law. And so that's, that's where he's going. And had you heard my initial reaction, I don't think he would have cared for it. But I've had some time to marinate on this. And, you know, so now, where we are is these multifamily homes, at some point are they just going to become abandoned? Is it going to become that the old owner dies or doesn't want to deal with it and isn't gonna put any money into this house? That they are never going to recoup an investment on? Never. I mean, we're already there. The poor man doesn't want to fix the house because he doesn't know what's gonna happen. He's gonna have to bulldoze it? He doesn't know. So, I, I think that we first need to understand the scope of the problem. We need to figure out how many of these multifamily homes are in the R1.
Well, but that, you're assuming that.
So that.
Know about all of them. You're assuming the city knows about all of them.
When they're illegally converted, they don't notify City Hall. Madam Mayor, I, I don't know who's talking. Have you identified somebody to ask questions?
We have, we have the people who are here from Maple Street, and we also have Ms. Wolf.
Mrs. Wolf is, is, is speaking. But I'm, I'm going to go ahead and, and finish my thought, please. So. We, we need to first identify, and there are some that have already been identified. But we need to understand the scope of the problem. We then need to figure out how we can not do the disincentivization of improvements and upkeep. Because that, that is the eventual outcome of this. It was intended to prevent blight by people doing things they shouldn't, but now here we are. So, we need to identify the scope. We need to figure out how we can bring these people up to code. And perhaps, what would be a thought going forward, and this is spitballing, hasn't been fleshed out, so if it's a little wonky, please forgive me. But perhaps, there could be a landlord-funded process of enforcing or inspecting or making sure things are correct. I don't have a great. I don't have that fleshed out. There's a lot there, but I, we need to, we need to follow the original intent. The original intent was that we not have so many people that were impending on the neighbors. But to, to disincentivize improvements and to, and to say, well, if you sell it, you can't sell it as an investment property, I, I think it's gonna create more problems than it solves.
Yeah, although there, we are gonna have to look at this, because there are some of them. I mean, when we were having the parking issue, do you remember the person who came in and we said, well, can't at least one person? There's like eight people in that house. And we said, can't at least one person park in the garage? And the response was, well, I rent the garage separately.
Mr. Womack.
So, there's some place in here where this, this is not okay. Like, we have to be like, no.
Case by case makes more sense.
Yeah.
To say, can, can this be brought up to code? No, or yes? Like, can this be safe? No, or yes?
Yes, I agree.
There, as opposed to just being like, it's a wash. We're not doing it at all.
Ms. Hamel, there's more to it than simply code. If, if council wants to go and allow multifamily units to exist throughout this R1 district. Let's just change the entire district R3. And allow everybody to convert it to some, to multifamily homes.
For the person who attends every planning commission meeting.
I'd like to know.
Understands the complexity, but I don't think a, a black and white answer is the answer to this. Because like Ms. Nixon said, we are where we are. And so a full one-eighty is gonna cause way more problems. And I, I'm like totally open for us discussing it and going through, so. I mean, I don't want that to be confused with, I, I can totally grasp that. I probably don't even understand the complexity of this issue.
Can we look at the special land use policy to address some of this issue? In these houses are already built.
Right.
And we put a, can put a special land use on it somehow. I'm not saying we can, but just as a discussion, which would make sure that each one of those apartments has a storage and a parking. And it wouldn't eliminate their right to have it there. And then the other thing is, if it, if it burns down, like thirty-seven Beach did, sixty-seven Beach. It can't be rebuilt as a multi.
That would get rebuilt as a single.
But at least with special use, there would be an option.
So, I don't think special land use would be either legal or the appropriate manner of doing that. But also, if we grant a special land use or variance, which is really what should be used. Those properties could indefinitely into infinity, be able to be used and rebuilt as multifamily units. So, we're basically saying, if you want to illegally convert your property. And we don't, and we don't catch you, then you can continue that use forever and ever.
Not, not if it happens.
Wouldn't they have to ask the city for a variance? So, they wouldn't be illegally converting new ones. It's just the ones that we are, we know.
But once they've made the variance, it can live like that forever.
I'm talking about the ones that exist now.
We don't have to grant a variance to the ones that aren't up to code or aren't safe or have other, any other issue that we, we find. We don't have to give them a variance, then they don't get one. So, it's not every single one that is illegal gets a variance now. That's the rule. That, that's also a bad answer.
Yeah.
Well, we'd have to have some criteria though.
And I'm, I think we would all be open to, to that.
I thought, I thought the attorney's possible solution was quite elegant.
Which was remind us.
Well, if you look at it, it's the idea, um, and we'd have to get more specifics on it, but that we would go to them and, and grandfather this for the time that they have it. As long as they sign an agreement, a document saying that they understand they're non-conforming. And therefore, when they want to sell, or if it burns down, it can't be replaced in this capacity.
But who's gonna?
Madam Mayor, have you identified the person who's speaking and asked him for comments?
Well, and this is where I also go back to, there's gotta be some dates and some documentation on something that's this. Yeah, but there's, there's gotta be something that shows that this was for, taken from six to four in nineteen ninety-something. I'm, I'm saying, I think there could be some probably documentation put together.
While I appreciate the public comment, the public comment is at the beginning of the meeting.
It is, and I am.
Work this out for you guys, as I.
And I am, I am being far more generous with public interaction than I'm supposed to be for a public meeting.
That's why they keep asking who's talking.
So, what happens, what happens if we put, put some, so, we put something on a, on a title that says that you can't, you can't sell it as is? Then what? What happens when they sell it? What happens to this?
I think we come back.
When we sell it.
They would have to come back and ask.
Or they don't sell it.
Well, I, I think then we, we end up again in the land of unintended consequences.
That's what I'm saying.
So, I, I don't think that's good either. I would like to see us somehow figure out how to grandfather the ones that are safe for occupancy, already in existence. Willing to let the city know they are in existence, so there would have to be a legal notice.
Yep.
So, there'd have to.
Tell us and we find out about it later.
Oh, too bad, so sad. And if it burns down, rebuild it as a single family. I would be okay with it changing hands, as is so long, as it's safe. And not an octuplex.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
You know the one I'm talking about.
I know exactly the one you're talking about. So, I, uh, yeah.
And I, um, I've touched base with Linda Hunt.
Former Mayor Hunt?
Yeah, former Mayor Hunt. And about when this property was, she doesn't remember exactly, but check on when the city property, the city's rental property program was in effect. Check on that area. That's all that she can remember. But check on that, because must have, some program must have gone into effect around that time.
In Kalamazoo, and is still very much alive. And, I mean, we can. Lisa is her niece.
I would still like to research the possibility of using a special land use for these existing homes. Which is kind of a variance, but when that property, let's say, you guys own it for five years. First of all, you get this special land use, which will be reviewed by council, planning commission to make sure you have enough parking and so on. If you sold it in five years, the next owner would have to again get this special land use to make sure that the parking and the, the storage are still adequate. And there hasn't been more apartments added and so forth. But I just can't see putting it on the title. Then the next person's not gonna buy it, and you're gonna see like unintended consequences. That house will crumble. Unless they want to convert it to a one person.
Because this is the piece though, like, so, I have friends who live in the Heritage Hill District in Greenwich. And lots of those houses got divided up, and they're now doing that same kind of process, where they're making them convert back.
Yes.
Because lots of them turned into, you know, twelve-person apartments. That were not really safe. And they're moving them back. So, I don't know that this idea that it's impossible and they will crumble and no one will ever buy them ten years from now, is necessarily inherently true.
But we're talking what, about six, six, maybe eight places? We're not talking about an entire.
Also Heritage Hill is different than.
Neighborhood. And I think that would also, with the special land use, would also improve those properties. Because there's things, like we did down the street. Hey, you gotta have room to park. You've gotta have your storage. You gotta have this, and you gotta have that, or you can't live there. And that's one of the things, the solution, a solution that I see, that we could work out, just specifically for those places.
Well, and I, I wonder if part of, I, I alluded poorly to it earlier. I don't think I had fully thought it through, but so these, these houses, what, however many there are, that are in the R1 district that were
Aware of.
Well, that we can become aware of and determine are safe. Perhaps we would ask those landlords to maybe fund some kind of inspection at the sale. Because if it's no longer safe, or appropriate, or whatever. Then at the time of sale, we would have another check to make sure that this is appropriate going forward. I, I don't know how that works, and I'm not familiar with the legalities of it. I'm sure there are many. But.
But there's a way. Don't they already do special inspections for like?
Yeah, they do every two, three years.
Yeah, but if they're non-conforming or illegal.
Then we haven't been inspecting them, if we don't know they exist now.
And it's one of the things I said to the manager, don't.
If we don't know about them, then there's literally no, like.
Well, then.
We find out about them.
And, and then unfortunately, we might have some more folks in the same situation.
But if we say, do a campaign, come forward, we're gonna do it on a case-by-case basis, see if we can get these variances. And if you don't come forward during that time, then that's on you. That's on the landlord then. And if you don't come forward during that time, then that's on you. That's on the landlord then. Then we can say, nope. But we're gonna prosecute you to the closest center of the law.
Nope, you can't, you can't sell it as is. We attempted at this time.
So those, I mean, those are probably gonna be few and far between because I think people would want.
I'm sure they will, but I, I'm.
There's, there's gonna be.
There's going to be one.
There's going to be one.
And at that point, I don't feel bad for you. If we did all of this work to try to make it work for everybody and you didn't come forward.
Yeah.
And what else did you want us to do at that point?
Communicating and all is really just the most important thing in trying to, yeah. Reach out to them, give them that chance and. That's what we need to do.
And I think, and as I'd said to the, the manager, um, we have some space requirements, right? And he said, we do. And I said, do we measure? And he said, I don't know if we do.
Oh, well, we need to measure.
Yeah, I believe we do.
Because again, I, I've, but I also understand if the inspector isn't going in there literally with the tape measure because. Previously, they've inspected the place and they're looking for things like the hot water heater and the electricity and they are looking at square footage. Because well, it must have been okay, right?
Sure, cause at some point, somebody must have said it was okay.
Inspectors don't last, they don't stay long in your home most of the time. They're kinda like. Yep, looks good, you know, they don't.
Then maybe part of the process is.
We need to like.
Like she said.
Establish those and.
For an inspector to come and um have paperwork ready for the application.
Or it cannot be sold as a multifamily home.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is again, part of how we end up with, you know, eighteen people living in a house that was really meant.
So then maybe they say that, maybe the inspector says it can only be um three people, three.
Sure, cause it's.
Three um apartment dwelling or whatever. And then that's, that's what it is. You either make it that or.
And that could be part of the special land use application.
That's actually how many of the houses in Grand Rapids have been getting contumped back. They've went from, they were these, you know, divided up into twelve and then they said.
With that if it.
And then they started saying, no, I guess you're gonna have to make this four.
Yeah, which is totally fair. I think that's, I mean, we need to do that for the safety of the people living there. So that's not a question.
And we're just, we're also back to the, because we had dealt this with this previously, the parking. Which is really how we came to even know about it.
Yeah.
Is when you try to have ten people park cars.
Yep.
On one lot.
On one lot. Residential neighborhood.
Or.
Yes, it was, it's two lots, it's two, there's two lots, there's a nice garage and a ample parking.
Sure, just carrying.
Right, this is one for one, two, three, four, one. Yeah. Be able to even get two spots. That's amazing. So. Or, yeah.
Okay, any other thoughts? And Mr. Manager, we appreciate the work you've put into this and we know that the paperwork is not. Um. Well documented. How about that? Is that a good way to put that? We don't have a full history of the paperwork and documentation and a huge piece of what we have laid in your lap. Has been trying to put together that documentation and find ways to, at least going forward.
Yeah.
Have this make sense and work. So we gave you a very difficult job. And we appreciate that you are trying to do that in as um. Concise and clear while still being polite and kind way as possible. Sure. Yeah, Cam. John Two-Sink's way. Mr. Two-Sink was on the city council.
Yes.
He's a mayor.
Madam Mayor, if I could just interject for half a second. Madam Mayor, uh, I can't hear anything that's being said. Perhaps it's best to put her at the microphone if this is gonna be entered into the record.
Sure.
Sally Rinkie speaking here. Um, so I went to. Speak with um Mr. Young, um spoke with Fred Gunnel and Cam.
Two-Sink.
Um, she explained that her husband was the mayor and um she sat on the board, the zoning board. Um, for many years back in nineteen seventy, whatever. So um, so she would be able to come, she said that she'd be happy to come and speak. As well as her bro- ninety-three year old brother Fred and Mr. Young. So I feel like we have. You know, some, several people that will come and speak and vouch for that house because that part, house, I went to the library, it's in two books in the library. Trying to get documentation, I mean, um, Skinner family lived there and um, so I feel there's a lot of people. That know about that house and can vouch for it. And I feel like that should be taken into consideration. Um, since there's no documentation from the city or, so would you guys?
If you can provide documentation, then obviously we're going to incorporate that. That's where I was talking about my fence. The city didn't have documentation, but I had eight emails going back and forth with the city that the city didn't happen to have anymore.
Saying to use their, their.
I'm saying if you bring this.
As documentation.
Well, I think the testimony of a former board member saying, this is what I did. Absolutely. And I mean, I think you, if you can compile some of this together. We certainly have to take that into consideration.
Okay, do, do we need it specifically from them? Because I, I feel like she did compile this.
Okay.
Whole letter.
I documented that.
Yeah.
And.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. All that and more.
Unless, unless specifically.
If we feel like we need, um, I was gonna say, if we need like specific, we can, we can talk to Mike about the level of documentation we need. If we need like a signed, um, notarized letter from these people verifying that this is their statement. So that it's not like you saying that they said this. Do you know what I'm saying? Because if we're gonna try to put this in as documentation, we'll need to have some sort of format for that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah.
Thank you. Sure, Ms. Wolf.
I'm Sue Wolf. I just wanna thank you. This was a very outstanding meeting, great discussion. Um, I think two great ideas, lots of very sensible, fair discussion. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think you're headed in the right.
I, I do want to just reiterate that nobody here is against renters. And nobody here is saying, I don't want a rental next to me. I, I literally bought the house next door to me, moved my parents in with the intention that after they passed away. I will rent the house. So this is not about not wanting to rent to people. So I just wanted to make sure we don't, nobody thinks that our community is, is, is not welcoming. To, to people who wanna rent.
It's about zoning.
And it's about not taking advantage of people who rent.
And not creating more. Um, apartment houses in a R one district.
And, and making the infrastructure not sustainable because you're trying to put so many people. Into a space that wasn't intended to hold it.
And cars.
Well, that's the, the whole infrastructure, the sidewalks, the roads, the parking, the, the water, the electric, the, the, I could keep going. Um, it, like it needs to be sustainable in a way that's safe. And doesn't deteriorate. The infrastructure that wasn't designed to put twenty people in it. So that's the, that's the pieces that we're trying to protect. Sure, sure. We don't normally have this much, but I also understand this is a very difficult situation.
Derek Kedishkin, in regards to what you're bringing up as far as the inspection. Idea, we paid a thousand dollars uh for a full inspection. That's the size of a buck on this property. We're ready to move forward with, you know, a lot of those items.
Yeah.
We're just kind of, you know, it's kind of what we're talking about. Our hands are kinda tied right now. Um, on, right, on the major improvements to, to get everything, you know, where we want it. And where the inspector sees, you know, that the property needs to be, so.
Thank you.
And I definitely know that, worked for a very large corp- large corporation and a lot of younger. Lot of young people, these millennials that wanna come in and they wanna rent. They don't wanna buy a home because they, you know, they. They're gonna wait to have kids and they wanna be able to travel and not be locked into anything. Um, I just don't see any reason that.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I have no, we have no prejudice against.
No way.
It's not a, so I just, I did feel like I needed to clarify that, cause that seemed to be uh one of the senses.
I have a, I have one further question.
Sure.
So what I, what I think I hear uh from our, our young couple that came to see us tonight is they're kind of in a quandary. And aren't sure if they can move forward. And I don't know. How we can legally assure that they can. Or are we just going to have to leave them in limbo for a minute while we figure it out? And I, I don't wish to leave you in limbo. I just. Don't have a great solution tonight.
I, I am a big believer that if you can come up with some documentation. That predates when we know our zoning went into place. That we can make that grandfathered. If this was a multifamily unit before we made that officially.
Before eighty-two.
Right.
So we, so I, I think then what I hear is we on our side need to figure out what is that standard of legal documentation? Like, will a notarized letter from Cam Two-Sink work?
Saying I did this on this, on this board. I reviewed this.
Yes, that, and at that time, it was a multifamily unit.
And I mean, we know, we've voted on things, that there is no record. So I mean, we, we are empathetic, right, to some of the documentation, I mean, not that long ago. So, um, you know, I moved here in nineteen ninety-nine and I have, my documentation is emails on a fence. So, um, that didn't exist here at the city. So we're empathetic, but we will need to have some kind of documentation. That creates that ability to create that grandfather for this specific piece of property that's basically saying this existed. Before that. Does that make sense? And I don't have any, I can't tell you exactly what that looks like, but I'm sure we can come up with something.
We have to do this for the future.
Right.
We need to.
We have to.
Cause I, I'm. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, right, but our next meeting is in a month and.
They need to start.
Need to know things. Right, right. They can't. Would, would we have to have a special meeting or something? Is that where we should go?
Well, I think we need, maybe, but we need to figure out what are, what, what a threshold would be. I mean, like, this is a thing I can probably figure out with the manager.
Well, and if, if we can figure out a doable threshold to say, and, and if that will work, a notarized letter from.
A, a member of the pod- right, a member of the public body that enacted.
To grandfather them, I think we still need to work on this. I think this is, we are far. Things have happened anyway. But, but if we can find a way for them to be able to move forward sooner.
Yeah.
That would be good. And I, I don't see that we're going to nail down a policy on this. In any timeframe and have it be well crafted, that it's going to be helpful to them.
Do your tax documents say single family? That's what I, I mean, there are, I, I have, I have tax documents that go back to like eighteen forty. So I mean, on mine. Okay. Cause I have a cordial on mine. Mine's really old. I have the cordial that goes back and it says, um. Like it has when it was platted in eighteen fifty, whatever. Um, the, the Nielsen's gave it to me. So again, I, and I'm not advocating that's what you have to have. I'm just saying these really old houses. Some of them have stuff. It might. Have you been to the museum?
The museum is closed on Wednesdays?
Cause that used to be the one day they're open. No, Wednesday's, Wednesday should be, Wednesday's the one day they're open. And then, and then usually by appointment. They're, they're the Historical Society Museum and they have all kinds of documents going back to the plating of the town in the eighteen forties. So if this house was that old, there will be some stuff. And again, I mean, I'm not trying to like make it hard for you and I'm sorry that, you know, but. Those documents probably of some kind exist that say this was not a single family house before nineteen eighty-two. And then Mr. Young turned it into four. And we're probably not gonna be okay with going back to six. Just saying.
Just gonna throw it out there. Now it's, it's done.
Eight is definitely a no. So, but these are the kind of like, I'm sure we can, you can get that document trail somewhere. Does that make sense? Yeah. Okay, we're gonna move on?
Yes, we beat that half to death.
Well, and this was the death next. We knew that this was the big one, right?
We did.
And um, the manager told us when we were diving into this, that this is gonna be kind of ugly and messy and we need to figure it out.
It is, and we were.
Hopefully you sleep a little better tonight.
And Rose, I super appreciate all of your historical knowledge and thank you for phoning a friend.
Yep.
Um, she's, yeah.
We'll, we'll get some stuff from her. So uh, just, I did not know, by the way, that that was two houses.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Like I, and I've dr- I've driven by it like a million times. It's a beautiful, beautiful house. I just had no idea. It was like two, two houses put together.
How would we? I mean, you, you're almost the city historian here.
Well, I.
And your house is older than yours.
My house is old. And I know what my neighbors tell me about their houses.
Yeah.
And when we were, you know, working on our house and finding crazy things on the walls. Um, and you, you know, newspapers and skeleton keys and what have you. Um, you. You go talk to your neighbors, you know. I found this signet ring up in the, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, that was from my brother who died in nineteen thirty. Well, you can have it if you would like it.
All right.
So, okay, moving on.
Water main easement.
Yes, item E, water main easement on school district property, utility easement map. Thoughts on this, Mr. Manager?
Probably sleeping.
He's like, I'm done with y'all.
He's like.
Sorry, my, my thing had turned itself off. I apologize.
I can't imagine why.
Yeah, my, my computer's off.
Okay, yes. So uh, I have presented the actual uh easement documents to the school district. Um, I understand that they're looking them over and intend to vote on it sometime this month. Uh, so this is really just a placeholder, so the council's aware of it. It's coming to you.
Okay.
Hopefully with the school district's uh seal of approval. And then you guys, I don't know if you actually legally have to approve of it. Um, but I will, I guess, keep you informed about what's going on there.
Okay, I see no glaring shocking things with it. Does anybody else? So I think that looks good.
Yeah.
Then moving on to the curb bump out. So we've been talking about this for quite a while.
Yeah.
Like five years maybe?
Yeah.
So I had to dig back in the archives for this. This is from twenty seventeen where we started talking about this.
We should have done it in two thousand seventeen.
And so, you know, the, the, the short answer is Main Street is approximately forty-five feet wide. And if we were to do. And if we were to do this, we would, uh, add the curbing into the width of the parked cars on either side. So it'd make the danger zone, the actual road, only about twenty-seven feet wide. Which would significantly reduce the amount of time and, um. Um, distance you would have to cover to get back into the safety of the street. I'm sorry, the safety of the sidewalk. Additionally, it would, uh, narrow the road, which has the natural, um, tendency to slow down traffic. Um, and it would also create a location for pedestrians to stand and be seen by traffic instead of being blocked by parked cars. Of course, this is now a four-year-old estimate. It's only, uh, anticipating doing the south side of Maple and Main Street. Which I could easily see causing problems of people trying to pass on the right and then, you know, jumping their car over a curb. So we, we would probably have to talk to the engineers about how we could resolve that issue. Um, and get an updated quote for the cost because it's probably in the forty-five to fifty thousand dollar range. Uh, but, you know, I anticipate we're going to have marijuana money coming in and it's an issue I know that the board has been concerned about. Um, and I think with the hustling and bustling we have in the downtown now, uh, I think this might be a good thing to start doing moving forward.
I would particularly like to hear from Counselor Powell. I know that this has been a, um. The, the walkability of Main Street.
Yes.
Has been a absolute, like, high priority for you. And I, I'm not saying that in a bad way. I'm just saying like, I feel like you are more. Cognizant of the specific details and the ins and outs of it. You attend all the DDA meetings and have for years. Um, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, certainly we need to have a, you know, the professional engineering done and it would be nice to include it when we rebuild the road. But this, uh, passing on the right-hand side, which they're not supposed to do anyway, but they do. Um, that, I would like to see a draw-up, a mock-up of it and, uh. Weigh the pros and cons of the whole situation. Cause unintended circumstances come along when you least expect it.
How much parking do we lose?
I mean, none. That's why we need a draw, a draw.
No, I feel like. I, I just, but I feel like we need to have that conversation.
It's gonna be half of, half a car length. And so if you have. Half a car length on either side of every block, you lose one parking spot on one side of the road every block. So how many blocks is five-ish?
But really you can't park that close to the curb.
Oh, that doesn't stop anybody.
I know, but.
I'm just saying, we have to be prepared. People feel like they should be able to park right in front of the businesses on Main Street.
Yes.
And we will hear, and I'm not saying that it's the wrong answer, because if it's about safety, then we should do it anyway. But we will hear. That we will be taking out parking to put stupid pieces of concrete.
Yeah.
So that little kids don't die. Yes.
I know. I'm with you, friend.
I'm willing to do.
I'm just saying we should, we need to be able to be prepared to have that conversation.
Yeah, so we're gonna have more and more people and more and more events, hopefully, and.
The social district growing and.
Yes. We need to slow it down. It's just mad house.
Hats off to, uh, to our city manager that he had, of course, like, years ago.
Yeah.
They say this was a good idea.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's been on the back burner because other things have happened, but, you know, it's, we're, we're coming up and we're going to resurface Main Street. Now is the time. I would be in favor of doing this on both sides of the street. It is long been an issue. That people, you have to sprint. And even then, your safety is not your.
You can't see.
Well, and it's part of why we have to have a police officer for every time we have an event. If it's the Christmas parade, if it's the spectacular, if it's a red flannel.
They have to.
They have to have. Might save us money, actually.
Mr. Omet, could you get a new, uh, draw-up and estimate, uh.
For certain events.
List of pros and cons for this for us to review again soon.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this was something council even wanted to consider doing because we are talking about forty to forty-five thousand dollars. It might just a wild guess.
For all of them or one?
For just the, the one side of Maple Street. I would like to see this also occur on Ash Street. Uh, because that's kind of the natural southern border where people cross over Main Street again.
So is Cherry. That's a big busy corner.
So we can do every one of them, but now you're doubling the cost. You're looking about eighty-ish thousand dollars per intersection.
Never mind.
So, and there, there isn't, there isn't really grant money for this.
Yeah.
So this is something we'd have to budget for each year.
I need to back up. So, I had understood. That this estimate I'm looking at, though it's old, was for every corner on one side of the street. Was that not correct?
If you look at the, the diagram in eight F subpart two, it shows what you're getting for that cost estimate.
So that is two.
Correct. It would be, it would be two bump outs and only on the south side of Maple Street adjoining Main Street.
So like, how much do you actually think it will be if we do all of Main Street?
A lot.
Both sides.
Uh, if we're talking about five intersections, five intersections at today's current rates.
If you do more at one time.
Yeah, so, like, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh, probably closer to four hundred to five hundred thousand.
Oh, my God.
Okay, well, we'll back it up. Just a minute.
Well, I guess you can't. I was gonna say if we got a full amount and then decided how much do we cheer, but then the cost is gonna change every.
Well, and to be, and then every year we're tearing up a section of Main Street.
Right.
This, this piece that we just need a lot to fix.
Yeah. Yeah, we're like.
So we really, I would be in favor of figuring out how many of these we need, where we need them, and then just doing it.
Only ones, but.
Yeah, because when the new road comes in, we want it just.
Yeah, we're not doing this.
Let's, let's get it, let's get, uh, so could we get a map and estimate?
Yeah.
Of the whole.
So this is for one side.
This is for two bump outs on one side.
Yeah.
But do we?
One at the end of each, sorry.
At the end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of the block, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I could point out one minor issue, and that is we have, um, allowed CS manufacturing. Uh, to send their trucks, uh, eastbound on Maple Street from their warehouse. Uh, which I don't know if we legally should be allowing that. Uh, and so now those semi trucks are making very wide turns, uh, on Main Street from Maple Street. And so if we put these curb bump outs in, I'm not entirely sure that a semi truck could make either of those turns, either southbound or northbound. Which is part of, which is possibly a good thing, uh, but CS manufacturing may not appreciate it.
So really, when, when you're driving a semi, the problem is the right turn. Left turns are much easier. I, I have taken a semi through a roundabout.
Yeah.
Going left.
Yeah.
That's doable. Right is a problem.
Yes.
Um, so I think that's an excellent point. So if we were to, they come down Maple Street. And in order to go south, they need to turn right, but in order to go north, they need to turn left.
But why do we want semis on Main Street?
We don't.
But there's a complication.
They're already here.
Yes, so we're back to the, are you gonna now tell them they can't?
Kinda. Well, where are they going to go?
I don't know. I guess I didn't think about, I mean.
If, if I could jump in for a second. It's not about semi trucks being on Main Street. It's that they're taking Maple Street out the back parking lot when they're not supposed to be. They're supposed to be exiting to the south on the Cherry Street. And then taking Cherry Street either over to Second South of Muskegon, uh, Cherry Street over to Fifth Street. Um, which could either go to Muskegon or Pine Street, or making the turns on Cherry Street, uh, to Main Street. Which is why we would, would not propose bump outs at Cherry Street.
Oh.
So then the question becomes if we want to reroute that traffic naturally, where we would put these bump outs then would be on the south. Side of Maple Street, because it would make that turn impossible for a semi.
They would have to go to a different route.
They would have to go a different route.
Yeah. Or run over the curb.
Well, at some point.
That's what he's saying.
Well.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, can I jump in here a minute?
Absolutely. We would love to hear from you, Mr. LaRose.
So, we may have something that might squash this idea of putting them on every corner, being the fact that, uh. Our Main Street is the M dot one thirty-one emergency bypass.
Yes, it is.
And M dot may have something to say, especially if you're gonna put them on every corner. Um, may not be so involved if you're gonna put them on one corner. It's just something we'll have to look into. And consider if we're gonna go forward with this.
I, I appreciate that insight. Four hundred thousand dollars squashed it for me, so.
Fifty, that's not bad.
No, I thought fifty for the whole street. I was like, yeah.
I know. I'm like, this just doesn't make sense because we're talking sidewalks here and it's like this much for this.
So if the goal is to reroute them off, um, Maple, Maple, then we put them on the south side. If, if we don't care that they're running down Maple, we put them on the north side. Um, is Maple structurally different than Cherry Street? Because some streets are made for big trucks and some are not.
Yeah, like Fifth Street is.
Fifth Street is.
Yeah.
So that would be a question, because if we're allowing them to run down Maple and it's not built for that. We really need to stop it because.
Weight limit.
There is a weight limit and you can actually put grooves.
Yeah.
In cement.
Yeah.
And it's problematic.
Yep.
So if it's structurally different, we need to put them on the south side.
Do you know the answer to that question, Mr. LaRose?
It is not. Both streets were built to local street standards. Um, so even though downtown's considered major streets, they weren't. Either one was built to handle truck traffic. However, um, Maple Street, or I'm sorry, um, Cherry Street is a newer street. And when they did put it in. I think by the way it was put in, it would hold up better. I think it's a good idea to get them off Maple Street anyhow, just with the fact that. We've got the hardest cedar springs down there and some other things, um. Cherry Street being more of an industrial street, that's where they should be. And it may be as simple as establishing that as a truck route, um, that could eliminate the traffic on Maple Street.
The, uh, building when they developed that into that new manufacturing, that building and the plan was specifically. Made to turn the trucks onto Cherry Street, but. Doesn't seem to be working.
Her bump outs, south side. Take care of that. Time. Especially if, uh, if we put up a pedestrian crossing sign and the company gets billed for those a couple times because their truck ran it over. Um, management tends to get grumpy after they pay for that a couple times.
I think they try to direct the truckers to go off to Cherry, but, you know, these guys come from all over the world sometimes and.
I know, but.
It's a lot better than it was.
And we can put up a no truck sign that, that cues them that, hey.
That's something I've been talking about for years.
Something up there that I should be aware of, that maybe this is a bad idea.
Yeah. You've, you're making them aware one hundred percent. Again, just making people aware.
Yeah, and I wished we would do that, but it's just been.
Well, maybe that's part of what we need to add.
I've been discouraged about that.
Well, and, and maybe that's a, a good thing to put on Maple Street and. With signs, there always seems to be a lot of policy I didn't know about. And then not at our level, but I mean, just in general. Yeah, so, but I, I think that that would be, especially if we put the bump outs up there. I know when I drove truck, if I saw one of those signs. I didn't know what the problem was.
That you knew there was one.
But I knew it wasn't for me. And I knew I didn't wanna, I knew I didn't wanna go that way.
Got it, got it.
I'm just loving the image of you in a truck. I didn't.
Oh, you didn't know she was a truck driver? Yeah.
I love it.
She drove for Pepsi.
Yeah, for Pepsi and for, uh, Swift.
Swift, yeah.
Over the road, but, yeah.
I can barely bright and drive my Prius. It's a big one. It's a big one. So good that we have some.
Okay, so let's just, let's just, um, to kind of conclude then. So what we would like the manager to do is to look at some diagrams. And get some engineering for two bump outs on the south side. And a sign that says no trucks on Maple Street.
Thank you.
Yes?
Yeah. I would, I would like to do this at least at one more intersection on the other side of town if we can.
Okay, which intersection do you want to look at?
Yeah, get both estimates, maybe.
Yeah.
What is the, what is the street where it used to be Bob Truesdale shop? What is that street before?
Church.
Church Street. I think that's a natural boundary. Like, or, or even Beach, right near the Legion. It's a lot of traffic, like foot traffic in and out of the Legion. So somewhere around there.
Beach or church?
Yeah.
Church dead ends at the church.
We also do have a significant number of people who run across Ash Street right in front of City Hall.
Street.
I'm not, I'm not opposed. I just.
That's like city, city too.
What you're thinking, yeah.
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 It's not opposed.
Mr. LaRose, do you have an opinion on this? Mr. La, Mr. LaRose, do you have any opinions on this or thoughts on this?
Um, on curb bump outs, the only thought that I have two is a couple aren't bad on Main Street, but if, uh. We added more than two, the plowing would be a nightmare and we're gonna, we're gonna spend a lot more time.
Hydraulic, is what we need.
Yeah, so.
Well, I put that on the list with Marty's steam-powered fire engine.
Very steam-powered, nuclear steam-powered fire engine, yes. So with that said, so if it was gonna be two, do you have thoughts about where they should be?
I think, uh, Ash and, and Maple, just what's being talked about would probably be the best place, because then it sets up a boundary area where, hey. You just entered downtown, you just left downtown kind of thing.
That's true. That is not a bad idea.
Yeah.
We knew we liked you.
Funny when we ask the expert.
I know, right?
Right? So, does that give you some clarification, Mr. Manager?
All sorts. Thank you.
All right, then we're gonna move on unless anybody else has anything else. We're gonna move on to seventeen North Main Street and the potential of the DDA turning it into a pocket park. I hope we call it pocket park because I think that's adorable.
That's what we have. I mean, we have.
We have one right here next to City Hall. We call that the pocket park.
Well, the discussion I started at DDA was to that property that we got from the drain there. To make that into a DDA park, city, Cedar Springs City DDA park, and this, DDA invested it. And design it and make something that we can be proud of. And for folks who don't know what DDA is or what it does. It would be there as a shining example of here's your tax dollars at work. We got this cute little park downtown for, um. Whatever, rather than just kind of cobble something up.
Now, does that fit within the social district of where people could drink alcohol?
We're working on it.
Yeah, I think that was.
Because I feel like that could be a, a nice.
Spot from Red, or, I mean, like.
Right.
Nothing.
Right.
Everything goes that way, you know?
Well, and we had discussed at some point about some picnic tables and some food trucks.
Yeah.
Is that something they were still thinking of doing or were they going in a different direction?
Well, we want it to have it professionally designed for the ADA and the kind of tables we'd need. Um, I'm just waiting for, um, to get a design, first of all, and then we can go on to do.
Would you be looking for, um, from, like, a blessing from the council to say, we think that sounds amazing?
I guess so. If, if that's.
So as a straw poll, how would you all feel about this?
Yes.
I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
So we'd have to get some costs from the design and, um.
Let's go look and.
I, I want to know more about your vision.
Uh, first of all, it would have to be professionally designed. I don't want to say, oh, we'll do this next, this year and that. Everybody wants something different. Let's get a design.
What is your vision? What will happen there?
Um. Uh, folks that might be at Jose's, come out, eat their lunch there, whatever, at the bank or. Um, uh, folks that might be at Jose's, come out, eat their lunch there, whatever, at the bank or.
Food and, food and drink.
A cute seating area.
A cute seating area, uh, maybe a mural, mural, um. Just a cute little place.
Maybe fountain or a pond or.
I don't know if we wanna go that expensive, but something that's attractive and useful.
Sculptures or.
Already last.
This town.
A lot of kids having a good time with the picnic tables there. Anytime there's a festival, it'll be ea- eating area.
Sand. Like sandbox.
Sure, people could play music down there. There could be all kinds of things going on in that little park.
Yes, Mike?
Yep, so, uh, the vision I have, if you'd like to hear it.
Love to hear it.
Is there's a place in, um, uh, East Town called Outdoor Coffee or Outside Coffee.
Certainly.
Um, it's a really cute place and, uh, that's kind of the vision I have. It's a cute outdoor se- seating area. Uh, with various hammocks and picnic tables and whatever else. Um, and, uh, they have lighting for at night. And they have a pad where you could drive a, a food truck up onto and have it set up as a permanent or a semi-permanent food truck location. Um, so just, you know, if you wanted to investigate what I've been thinking. Uh, but I agree with Ms. Powell that we probably need to do something similar to the heart of Cedar Springs master plan. Uh, which is bringing a professional, uh, engineer to kind of help us with the design.
Does, does this mesh with what you understood the vision of the DDA to be?
Kinda, we, we just talked about it at our last meeting and everybody seemed to think, oh yeah, this would be great. Money wise, we're, we're pretty good money wise and maybe city would wanna throw some money into it too. But, uh, it's building the park these days is a big deal with all the ADA and this and the that. And if we're gonna have a, a coffee thing or whatever come in, we would have to have the. Electric call and all that stuff going on. So we'd have to decide how deep we're gonna get into that sort of thing. But people, I, it occurred to me that when somebody, I was at a meeting, somebody was crabbing about. What does the DDA do? They don't do nothing for us. They don't, what do they even do? And I'm going like. Maybe we oughta just show folks what we do. Have something to look at and say, there we go.
Well, I know from when we were dealing with this drain from the very beginning, um, you and I were at that giant meeting at the high school. Um, we don't wanna end up with a blank lot. It just looks like an empty lot. It's been abandoned, but you can't actually build anything on it.
Right.
Because it's a drain.
Yeah.
So the idea of creating some kind of a park.
Downtown park.
Is, is I think a wonderful idea.
Mm-hmm.
I just love a food truck.
Me too.
Yeah.
I, I, I would love.
Me too.
He gets way into your plans.
Yeah, we would have to build it that way so it could come in and.
Right.
Whatever, and maybe have different ones come in back and forth.
Right.
You could do like a schedule.
Yes. Yeah, except we have, do have a food truck ordinance.
We do, but they can now get a permit because we made that out.
If it's an event, or did we change?
Oh, no.
No, you can get it for any time.
All right, okay, that's good to know.
You just have to get a permit and go into a space that.
And which we had decided it was either at Marley Park or at the staging area that those either were designated places. Okay, food trucks could be.
So then we could designate the downtown park as.
We absolutely could.
Good, okay, that's it.
All right. Anybody got anything else on that?
No.
Okay, so do you feel like you got what you need to take back to the DDA?
Ready to rock and roll.
Mike, do you have anything else on that for us?
No, thank you.
Okay, discussion on a no ordinance to amend chapter thirty-two, article three sidewalks, division and construction and repair. Section one oh one through section one oh four of the code of ordinances for the city of Cedar Springs. We talked a little bit about this earlier.
Oh, is this to, is this what we were talking about carrot and stick or just if your stuff's broke, we're gonna tell you about it?
This is, this is that piece of that.
Okay, if your stuff's broke, we're gonna tell you about it.
So it's a little bit more complicated than that.
Yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, so basically what we're proposing is adding in driveways and curbs, uh, curb cuts. Um, and, and approaches to the ordinance that allows us to do that to sidewalks. So currently we're allowed to go in and tell you, you gotta fix your sidewalks. What I'm proposing is we say, well, now we can do that for your driveway and curb cut also.
Oh, okay, so not only the sidewalk, the, okay.
What is it you want with the driveways?
So if you have a driveway that leads to nowhere and it's crumbling and people use it to do illegal things. Um, it might be a good idea for us to say, hey, you gotta remove that and put curb in instead.
Cause I, I'm a person that went to court.
Over a driveway.
For parking in my driveway, so.
How many things have happened to you in this city?
And there's a reason we're here.
There is a reason I'm sitting here. So this was not my vision originally.
Um, I, I am. Good with including curb cuts and that because.
Yeah.
It's in the public right of way.
Yeah, the driveway.
Um, but the driveway, I live in a house that was built in nineteen fifty-two. And you were lucky to have one car back then and I most certainly park on my grass. Now, I tried to put down hardy grass so I don't make it look terrible, but it is on my grass and I. I, there was a public uproar the last time the city tried to tell people they couldn't park in their lawn. I am not willing to support that. Or even propose it. I think we leave the si- the driveway alone unless it is in a public right of way. That could cause a potential hazard to someone walking if it's on private property.
Um, Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
I don't think this ordinance does what you're saying.
Oh.
Uh, but we do have a separate ordinance which very specifically indicates you cannot park on your grass. Uh, which the city has not enforced, but if you feel that strongly about it, I think we should, uh, change that law as well.
Um, but there was some, before you. Two managers before you. There was some really ugly stuff about, like it was on the news. And there were, there were like police officers involved.
I, I am, I am not in favor of policing people's driveway. Regardless of what it looks like, unless it causes a safety issue for the public.
I'm, I'm with you. I'm with you.
We need to pull that policy or that ordinance out then.
But the driveway, your grass is not your driveway, right? I understand, and that's what Mike is saying. If this specifically doesn't address that, but my.
Right.
Point that I wasn't very clear on apparently is. I'm gonna park her, I'm gonna park and nobody's gonna tell me how my driveway has to look because. Many of our homes predate that, A, and B, if it's not causing a public hazard.
Then you're not parking on the sidewalk.
I'm not parked, no, it, okay, so let's, let's just, I do have a paved driveway. Let's say that it's cracking, there's grass growing up. If I have to mow my driveway. I am okay with that. I am also okay with my neighbor having to mow their driveway. So long as it does not cause a hazard to the public. So the curb cut, the sidewalk, I'm. We're completely within our rights.
Yeah, the, the conversation about is it six inches of gravel deep, right? And the guy out taking pictures of my house?
Now, if your grass in your driveway is over the limit, because I know there is one, okay, fine, you need to mow your driveway then. Unless it is causing a hazard.
Yeah.
Leave it alone.
So I know we've had, the manager disagrees with us on this regarding campers and boats and so on and where those can be parked. Um.
And I get his side too because he wants, he, it's.
Yeah.
He wants things to be safe and look nice. I mean, that's the goal. I mean, we're, we're putting nice things in because we want it to look nice. We're not like.
But if you want your camper in your driveway, that's on the side of your house or towards the front of your house. You can let your camper live there.
Right.
So Mike, the curb cuts we're talking about are, is the one by the, uh, former, uh, pub, right? The sidewalk is, there's a dri- there used to be a driveway in there.
If you're referring to the one directly across the street from City Hall.
Yes.
Uh, yes, that is a curb cut to nowhere except for over the sidewalk, which is a safety hazard.
Okay, and then there's one o- on Ash Street. That used to be a driveway for the parking lot for the store that was there. Which, um, I don't think that's such a big hazard because if there was a fire, we would want those fire trucks to go. Up in behind those buildings and have good access. In my opinion, that isn't hurting anything. The other one I'm thinking about and I, and the one at the Legion. That comes out on Main Street is a little dicey in my opinion because you got cars. Pulling in there off of Main Street and you're in right at a door and you got people standing there. And I do think the Legion has discussed closing that, but I, I couldn't be sure, but I do think that's kind of a hazardous. Cause if you pull out of there with a car, you can't see around that building if somebody's walking. And they can't see you coming and that's a little hazardous and I think we have tried to get a lot of those driveways. From exiting out on Main Street just for safety sake and, um. You know, I can see where there could be a place where some of those curb cuts could disappear, but can we demand it? I don't know. Could be a little rough. The ones on Main Street I think are kind of hazardous.
That's very different than talking about people's yards.
Yeah, right.
And he, and she, he, yeah, he was saying it didn't, it's not dealing with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just a little sensitive.
Right.
Well, it was ugly. I mean, it was ugly.
I'm still healing. It's been a long time.
I didn't take a day off work and go to court.
All right.
But that's a curb cuts I was thinking about.
A little salty.
Sorry.
It was nice, the one at Loom disappeared because that was kind of a hazardous situation. I can't think of any others.
You're the person who knows that stuff.
Oh.
No, that's. Saying that is a good thing.
Well, that's why I'm here.
Cause you, it is. It, you, you worked at a business on Main Street.
Yeah, I did.
Thirty years?
No, six and a half.
Why did I think it was that long?
Felt like that.
Felt like thirty?
It's nine forty-two. Get it.
So what's your thoughts on this? I'm looking at Rose.
Uh, it's something to look at, uh.
Would you like, would you like them to amend the charter? Would you like to have language come to us for this?
I don't know just now. Asking somebody to fix a curb cut, that's a lot of money.
Madam Mayor, we are not talking about amending the charter. This is an ordinance proposal.
Oh, I'm reading it wrong. Amend chapter. Okay.
It would be forcing people to spend a lot of money and, you know, unless it's a hazard. I don't, I just don't know.
How much of a hazard is it?
And then are they gonna use the curb cut if they sold the property? Would that, that property could eventually be something they'd need that curb cut for.
Well, I think the idea is we want the curb cuts to go away.
Right.
We think they're not safe.
Well, and there was a property that installed another driveway because the curb cut was there.
So they should have got.
And they perhaps should have gotten a permit.
Oh.
But by the thinnest of margins did not.
Hmm.
And that would be a, a deterrent for that sort of thing.
To put it there, they'd put it somewhere, the driveway somewhere else.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
So more thoughts on this? What are, what are your feelings?
I guess I'd like to see the language.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And see what makes it be considered a hazard.
Yeah.
And see what makes that maybe a business is, has a potential to go in there and would need that curb cut. And some of those curb cuts, like I said, the one over on, uh, Ash Street, if we had to get fire trucks back in there. That curb cut would be pretty handy and there's always a chance there's gonna be fire trucks back in there.
Someone who trove some very big tires over lots of curbs, I can tell you it's no problem at all.
No problem, okay.
I mean, I guess we could ask Marty how he feels about that.
I mean, when you don't wanna do it, it's not a problem, but when you do, it might be.
Were you the one crushing all the bump outs then? I was the one that learned that, uh, companies get crabby when you have a paper sign. This is personal experience.
I love it.
The city of Memphis may have sent a bill.
Very nice. Well done.
Okay, Mr. Manager, did you get what you needed out of this?
Probably not.
Um, not really, um.
All right, so what I am hearing is that the council would like some more information on the specific language. Regarding what is a hazard?
So that was me saying hazard, not necessarily him saying.
No, it was, it was Rose and you and that your feelings on this ordinance are about, is it. Involved in creating slash or eliminating a hazard? Is that the point of it?
Um, perhaps, perhaps what's best at this point is for individual council members who have concerns to come speak with me about their concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause I just.
Okay, then are we good on this?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, then communications, community event calendar. The twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two calendar, that is like hard to say. Uh. Attent- minutes index, DDA minutes, DDA attendance report. Any questions in any of this from the communications?
No.
No. Then fire station demol- demolition, demolition bid. I see that we went out, we asked people to put in bids. Do we have a timeframe on that, Mr. Manager?
I'm sure we do. A madam clerk, I'm sure has the exact dates. Uh, I don't have them with me.
It's printed on the form. I read it earlier, can't remember what it was.
Didn't give me one.
March third.
Uh, all right, so we don't really have anything else on that, correct? Okay, so we're waiting for bids and the bids will come in March third, right?
Correct.
Um, do we, has anybody submitted a bid yet? I know we wouldn't know the amount because they're probably sealed, but nothing yet. Cause hopefully, right? Um, I, I get asked about when are we tearing that down quite often.
We're in, in the process.
That, uh, Stark Beer Fest community event. There will be a community event, so please come, event March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Here.
I'm sure I'm sa- that German is terrible. Anybody here speak better German?
No.
No, okay, we need, we need Mr. Rengler here to. So city manager, anything else to add?
I actually do speak German. Um.
So tell us how to say Stark Beer Fest.
No, that's right on. It stands for strong beer, so it's a higher alcohol content than the normal beer.
Every German person I've ever met has told me that even when you think you're saying it correctly, they laugh at you and go, yeah, almost, no.
Oh, well, that's true. I took, I think, eight years of German and when I go to Germany, they talk to me in English because they know instantly I don't speak German. But, uh, yeah, no Stark Beer Fest, um, and I approved it under the council's policy that for events that have been previously approved without incident. Um, that I could approve it and this event incurs entirely on the CS Brewing Parking Lot property. Uh, so really it was just past the seven o'clock noise ordinance that they needed approval from.
Okay. So have a beer fest.
Yay.
Anything else, Mr. Manager? We're on to department reports.
Uh, I'm having a good time. Thank you for allowing me to attend, uh, virtually and I'll see you guys next week.
Woo-hoo.
Have fun.
That's sweet. Anything, anything from you, Bill? Department of Public.
Thing I wanna, the only thing I wanna add is we had the bid opening for the, uh, Red Hawk Water Main today. I don't have the final number yet. Engineers are looking at it, but, uh, I was surprised at the amount of bids we had.
Oh, wahoo, cause that's been a problem, right?
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has. It was rather amazing.
Wonderful, that's exciting. Uh, then Police Department, do we have Sergeant Probst?
We do, and I'm gonna say no.
Okay. I, I heard from my, from your colleague at Forest Hills that he came out and helped with the basketball game the other night.
Yeah.
And that things went well, that they were concerned that there might be some problems, but that it went well.
Yes, it went well.
So I was glad to hear that, so go Red Hawks. Um, then we're on to Fire Department, Marty.
In the interest, in the interest of time, I have nothing unless the council has questions.
I got nothing. We good on fire trucks?
No.
We're good on, by the way, thank you for getting that new fire truck, newer fire truck.
Well, thanks to the City Council for allowing me to take on that endeavor and, uh, it's greatly appreciated.
Well, it was greatly appreciated that you found it. It's such a, um, excellent price to replace the truck that is like older than my high school diploma. What was the final price on the truck?
We ended up with, um, ju, ju, just the price of the truck was thirty thousand.
Nice, that was, yeah. Okay, and then we're gonna, we're gonna put another eighty-five hundred, nine thousand into fixing it up and then move some of the equipment over.
Madam Mayor, that, Madam Mayor, that truck on the market today would sell somewhere between eighty to a hundred and twenty.
Yeah. And a new one, a new one is two hundred and fifty?
Um, plus, right around, to replace it with that, it would be right around four hundred thousand.
Oh, my God.
Which when we have to move to a ladder truck, that's, we're talking about.
You're one point five mil.
One expensive thing at a time.
No, I'm just saying, but we, we should, we need to like have that vision for as we get buildings that are more than four stories tall.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to, when we look at this new apartment complex.
Yeah.
Just, just.
Great, now we're sharing, right?
Yeah.
We have a mutual aid agreement with Sparta and Rockford. They have ladder trucks.
We have three aerial platforms in our mutual aid, uh, Sparta Plainfield and Rockford has a ladder that's a seventy-five footer.
Cool.
So, just, but just, uh, fire trucks are expensive.
Yeah.
You, you might wanna mention to the council, uh, we're gonna put up some lemonade stands throughout town and raise money this year.
Okay.
Good, go the DDA part.
Yeah. And we do, we still do not have a fireman's auxiliary, correct?
No, no ma'am, Mayor, we do not, um, not a lot of interest from some of the wives because a lot of the wives are working wives.
Sure. Well, and I remember when there was interest and then it got shut down, so I didn't know if, under new management, if things were different.
Well, again, uh, due to part interest in time, it was never really established, cause we couldn't get it off the ground.
Okay.
We lit, we lit the fuse, but it was too wet and went out.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
Are we on to our?
We are on to the City Clerk.
Yeah, I will keep it brief, but just wanted to remind you guys and the public that we have the public accuracy testing, February fifteenth at four thirty. Um, we test all of the election equipment, make sure that it's properly reading the ballots, that it's counting the votes it should be, making sure that it's giving us proper errors when there are people are cross-voting, those types of things. We test it um, extensively before every election, so if there are members of the public, I please urge you to come. Um, we did have one member of the public last time, so I was happy to have her.
I have a very unusual question for you. Apparently, there is a person running for office here in Michigan who is telling people that they should unplug voting machines if they don't like what they see happening at their voting place. I just wanted to clarify that first, that's not a thing. And two, that if they do, is there like a battery backup system? Is your vote protected?
So our machines do have a battery backup regardless if they're unplugged or if we lose power.
Okay, so that's what I just, I just wanted to, when that came to me, that this is apparently a thing, and I believe that the state attorney general is exploring this.
But really, anybody with any reservation should come to this public.
But, but, but do not.
Ask questions.
But do not unplug a voting machine.
Correct.
And if you unplug our voting machine, we're going to be very not happy with you, and we have a battery backup.
We have a battery.
And we have police protection. I think that'd be totally illegal, isn't it?
It, I'm pretty sure.
I think that's tampering.
I won't comment on legality, but voters should not unplug.
Yeah, juju.
Yeah, let's, let's just go with, that would be problematic. But it is not problematic in that your vote would be protected because we have a battery backup, which is the part that I wanted to clarify. So it also would be pointless. So not a thing you wanna do. So anything else then, Madam Clerk?
Than that, you guys can see from my report that the clerk's office has been extremely busy between elections, FOIAs, marijuana licensing. It is a very, very busy time for.
What a wonderful job you did on this, all these notes and minutes and stuff. Thank you. I never saw that really done before on a regular basis.
Yeah, no, you're doing an amazing job.
Start, you know.
And then moving on to Finance Director. We have Darla?
I am here.
Hooray, anything you got to tell us, friend?
I'm good unless there's questions.
I don't have anything. Anybody got anything?
No.
All right, then Code Enforcement. I don't think we have anything special there. Building inspection, I still don't know why we're even keeping that on there. And, oh, um, I know, this is just the moment where I go, I miss Dosh. Um, Board and Commission Minutes, the NKCE, they just had their daddy-daughter dance, I think. And, and then Council Comments. Ms. Powell.
I sure hope we can do something to help these folks with these multifamily homes. And, um, these people sitting here with this three hundred thousand dollar investment. I'm sure there's something we can do, and, and we really need to pursue this and pursue it quickly.
Okay. Ms. Race.
I completely agree. I know that it, I would be just stressed right out knowing some, it's just been at a halt, you know? I think we pinpointed a lot of very important things tonight, and I think we're on a, you know, on a good wave right now to get things signed and move forward, cause we need to do that. So I think we all know the marijuana thing kinda just took precedent for a while, and it's like, finally, we can move on to more important things, right? So.
I agree. Ms. Atchison?
Um, I agree with Ms. Powell. Um, I, you know, I think these, these multifamily units have been allowed to, to, to be for such amount of time that it's hard, you can't just run up to them and tell them you can't be that anymore, especially after somebody just purchased one. Um, I just, I, I really think we can find a way to rectify this situation and hopefully get it so we can control the fact and control that use in that R-one district. But not make somebody conform to it, that there's no way that's gonna happen. Other than that, I think everybody is, I really enjoy working with all you ladies. Um, and Jerry.
Jerry.
Um, and also thanks again for the, the, um, I'm, I'm really seeing with the clerk how things weren't, I thought the last one was right on the ball, and we've got some issues that are going on, and we keep finding issues, and whether it was old city managers or old clerks, I'm glad we got somebody that's doing the job. Thank you so much, Rebecca.
Yeah, it's huge.
It's huge, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Hamel?
Uh, I just wanted to say that I enjoyed, um, a friendly debate today on all the topics. I think it's really good that all of us, um, are afraid to like speak our minds and bring out points and like our own experiences.
Yeah.
Um, cause it helps a lot, and that's what I wanted is, um, just to be a part of something where everybody is engaged and active in the discussion, so I appreciate all of you guys participating.
Ms. Nixon?
Oh, boy, I've said enough. I'm leaving it there.
Okay. Um, I would just like to say, since, um, I'm the last one, that I'm amazed at the expertise of our department chairs from Marty to Rebecca to Bill to, you know, we can say, please tell us your expertise on this, and they have an answer. And, or if they don't, they say, I'll get an answer. And that's just phenomenal, that level of skill and knowledge and understanding of this minutia of some very complicated stuff. And our city manager, who is constantly trying to wade through all of this that we don't have as well documented as we should. And that is, is kind of this morass, and I really appreciated tonight. This was a hard one, like when I started printing out this with the minutes and the notes and that, I was like, okay, this is a big old meeting.
Yeah.
We have not had one like this in a while. And my, my, um, leadership style is very different than Jerry Hall in that I wanna hear from all of you. I want you all to collectively come together and help solve these issues of how we're gonna do this. And you all absolutely did that tonight. You just nailed it. I mean, this, you know, let's look at this and let's pull this in, and I really appreciated that right down to like trying to find documents from Linda Hunt. And, um, I, I'm tremendously grateful for the effort and thoughtfulness and due diligence and, um, committed to the process that this council is. And I've been at a lot of this, and lots of times it's not like this. So that is my final comment for the night, is I am just really appreciative of you all being willing to work through the hard stuff. So with that, we're adjourned.
Boom.
So if they did the R-one.